We'll get started here as soon as we can. It's about six o'clock now, so we'd like to get started. Thank you.
So, Commissioner.
I know. Right. Could've shared the heat, huh? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming this evening. Since we have a quorum of commissioners here from the city commission, we have to consider this a city meeting. We did do the required postings and all of that in advance. But if you'll stick with me just for a minute, I need to do a couple of things that are required for the Open Meetings Act. First, I'd like to call roll for the Enid City Commissioners. So as I call your name, please say you're here. Commissioner Allen?
Present.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Ezel was not able to join us this evening. Commissioner Waddell?
Here.
Commissioner Stallings?
Here.
Commissioner Mason? Oh, I seen him when he was here. He said he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, and he did show up for just a moment, but he had another obligation tonight. So we have from the city and Mayor Pankinen. So we got the mayor and four commissioners that are here for five of these seven. I'd also at this time like to recognize some of our other panel members that are with us. From representing the state, Senator Roland Peterson. Representative Chad Caldwell, Caldwell, thank you both for being here. We also have county representation. Maggie Jackson from Garfield County Health Department is with us. From the city, city manager Gerald Gilbert, police chief Brian O'Rourke, Enid school superintendent, Dr. Floyd, Daryl Floyd, the president of the local NAACP chapter, Lenita Norwood, and the CDSA executive director, Sheri Ezel. And now, what I'd like to do is turn the floor over to our moderator for the evening, our volunteer moderator, the one that came up with the idea to do this and encourage the city council to get involved. His name, and I think everybody knows him already, is Demetrius Office. Demetrius?
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight? Come on now. Come on. We're gonna have a night. We're gonna have a fun night. You're gonna get your questions answered. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
So I'm talking about. My name is Demetrius Office. I am currently from Ward Five. My address is 320 Dogwood Lane. So I am a patriot of this community and an activist in this community. And the reason why I put this together is because I keep hearing a resounding question of who is my representative? Who is my senator? Who do I belong to? Who can I ask questions to? Who can I talk to? And so instead of me telling you to go and send them a message, I brought them here. So let me open up. I want to first and foremost thank my panel. As you can see before us, we have an all-star panel. We have from every corner of this community, anybody and everybody that can answer your question in regards to COVID-19, in regards to education, in regards to this catastrophe with George Floyd. And yes, we're gonna talk about it. We're gonna be very brutally honest tonight, ask your questions tonight, and make sure we get everything out in the clear, because this is your shot to connect with your elected officials tonight, okay? So before we get started, I kinda wanna set the tone tonight. Again, as we go through this night, you will have some cards. You have been given some cards as you check in. It's got your name, your address, and your ward, okay? And question, if you have a question. We're gonna start with opening statements from our panel, and they're gonna go for at least between three to five minutes, so you have plenty of time. If someone says something that jogs your memory or you have a question about, by all means, raise your hand. And some of our volunteers, volunteers, raise your hand in back. Some of our volunteers will see your hand if you got a question, and they will come give you a card, all right? And once you're done filling that card out, just see the volunteers and hand that card back to them, and they're gonna bring it to me, okay? That's how you're gonna get your answers, your questions answered tonight, okay? So make sure, make sure, make sure you do not leave here this evening with unanswered questions. We're gonna try to make sure we get to every single question you might have tonight, okay? Also, on those cards, you might know, you might not have known, you have your ward, who you belong to. I don't really, I don't really mind if you wanna keep your address private on that card, but we need to verify for our purposes if you reside here and what ward you belong to, because I really want you guys to build an intimate relationship with your commissioner here, or your mayor, or your representative as well. So that's the reason for putting your ward where you stay at on your card, okay? On the back of your form is the agenda. So if you wanna follow along tonight, this evening, just refer to your agenda, and you can see where we at, okay? So I wanna take the time to set the tone, all right? Throughout the evening, you'll see me running around and taking a temperature to see how well this thing is going, okay? Because it's really important to me that we begin to be intimate as a community, that we begin to understand one another, that we begin to talk to one another, that we begin to listen to one another, okay? So it's very important to me that this thing is very an intimate, close setting, okay? And so what I do not want to happen tonight is if we go off on a tangent and we just completely bypass treating others as you would want to be treated. So that's the theme tonight. Treat others as you would want to be treated, okay? And we can get through this thing peaceably and in decency and in order, okay? So I wanna set the tone. I wanna share with you guys who I am, so you guys can know exactly who is talking to you on the mic, and you guys can kinda feel where I come from. I'm a regular citizen, just like you are. I haven't done anything significant other than wanna be a part of this community, wanna support this community. I arrived here in Oklahoma December 2008 by way of Air Force Base. I will be honest with you, when I arrived here, I did not like Enid. I really didn't. But as I began to meet people like yourselves and get involved and wanna know people and how this city function, I cut my teeth in service work, all right? And so when I first got here, I served about six years on active duty, and combined 13 years on active duty, once I came off and went into the Air National Guard, God told me to stay here. I don't know why, but I think it's got to do with tonight, okay? So you found me here tonight. After I got off active duty, I signed up for an organization called Leadership Greater Enid. And I see some people out in the audience that has attended Leadership Greater Enid, some of our panelists has attended Leadership Greater Enid. Leadership Greater Enid is about building tomorrow's leaders. That's where you can find your calling. That's where you can know how to see the city function. That's how you can know where you need to place yourself to be of service of your community, because I definitely believe in leaving the community better than what you found it. If you're gonna reside here, you have a fiduciary responsibility to take care of it, to take care of it, to treat it like it's your baby, okay? After being here, signing up for Leadership Greater Enid, I got accepted to that program. I held a couple of concerts here. I had a couple concerts called Break the Chain here, in benefit, raising money to stop human sex trafficking. I wanted to eradicate that. And we had a young man that came to me and said, "I wanna do some mission work across the country and stop human sex trafficking." So I got behind him and I supported him. Later on, I held a community culture celebration. We had some young men that came to the city council on Tuesday, and I was so happy to see those young men there at city council on Tuesday, and they was giving us their heart and telling us why things that needed to change. And I couldn't talk, I couldn't stop them before they went out of the door, but one of the young men said, "There's nothing to do around Enid. There's nothing to do around Enid. I don't know what to do." Well, one of the things that I put together is community culture celebration. That didn't say I want blacks and whites to get together. That said I want the culture of the entire community of Enid to get together under one roof and have some social time, and build some relationships, and have some, and have some relationships with one another, and figure out where they come from and why they're here. Later on, I joined the Greater Enid Chamber of Commerce as an ambassador, and later on became the president of the ambassador. But my calling was to welcome new businesses in and grow the city of Enid, and build those relationships, and make those businesses that's choosing to come into our city feel comfortable, feel welcome, feel like they belong here. Not any inequality, but fairness and say, "Welcome to my home. We wanna make sure you're welcome," okay? Later on, I cut my teeth in the nonprofit sector. I served on the boards of Making a Difference Incorporated. I served on the board of RSVP, and now I'm serving on the board of Salvation Army. I'm actually currently the chairman of the Salvation Army. I say all of that to say this. I just found a way to support my community. I just wanted to be involved with my community. I just wanted to give back. I just wanted to take that person who sat, who has experienced some attrition in their life, some adversities in their life, and get beside them. I don't wanna lead them, I just wanted to come alongside them, and I wanted to understand where they came from, and I wanted to be a support system to you. That's the purpose of tonight. That's the purpose of tonight. That's the purpose of this panel here, is to come alongside you and get your needs met, your questions answered, and so we can move to a better community, because we see what's going on in the world. It's quite obvious to everybody. It's heartbreaking, to say the least. And so this is the purpose of this forum, is to understand that these guys here have taken time out of their schedule and came to you, came to you. I mean literally, we put this together in less than a week. And they wiped their schedule out, and they came to you, and before you, they're sitting here today. So that tells you in evidence that they are here regardless of anybody. I just sent Senator Roland Peterson an email, and he responded. I sent Representative Caldwell an email, and he responded. I'm nobody, but they're here because no matter what, they wanted to be here to answer your questions, to build a relationship with you, and they are here to seek change. So allow them to be that pillar for you of hope, and ask your questions, ask as many questions, well, everybody's limited to two questions per person, but make sure you ask the right questions tonight, and we can make sure that the panel can answer those questions for you. So at this present moment, I'm gonna give you guys an opportunity to really get intimate with our panel. Like I said, we have a superstar panel tonight. And I want that panel, our panel, to share with you what their background is, what they're most concerned, what they're most concerned of going forward, and how they plan to make a change for you. And again, while they're talking, all right, if you have questions, please make sure you write your question down, and please make sure you get them to our volunteers in the back, because if they don't make it to me, your questions are not gonna get answered, okay? We all clear? All right? All right? If I can start with Ms. Maggie Jackson at the end, if you can, share with the audience where you come from, what your profession is, and why you're here tonight.
I wasn't supposed to go first. I am beyond humbled and honored to be on this panel, first of all, so making me go first isn't fair. But I'm Maggie Jackson. I am representing the Garfield County Health Department. I'm a community engagement director for eight counties of the Health Department, and who's not with me today are the 149 teammates that I have that have been working countless hours and sacrificing in the response to coronavirus. And I just wanna honor them first, because I am just a small tip of the efforts in my eight-county district to try to mitigate and respond to this pandemic. So shout out to the amazing nurses that I get to work with every day, and our administrative staff, and all of the other teammates that I have. So just in case you're wondering, we still have 28 cases in Garfield County, one death, and 24 are considered recovered. So we have been blessed and lucky. I think the decisions that our leadership have made have enabled us to see lower rates of COVID-19 in our community. But I wanna talk about the harsh reality that you are more likely to become infected by COVID-19 if you are black than if you are white. And we are seeing data coming out of New York, which it's New York, but in New York, you'll see 92.3 deaths per 100,000 people. That's how they report statistics, is out of 100,000. If you're out of black persons versus 45.2 are white people. So double the amount of deaths are occurring in black people over white people. So the mission of the Health Department of the state is protect and promote health to prevent disease and injury, and to cultivate conditions by which Oklahomans can be healthy. So the conditions that we live in have the most impact on our health. We might think it's our DNA, our healthcare, you know, maybe, you know, if we smoke or exercise and eat well, those things all help, but the most impact on your health comes from where you live, work, and play. And the harsh reality is that we are seeing racism take a toll on our health. One of the statistics that has impacted me, just as a mom, when I was pregnant, I learned that an African-American woman was three, it was two to three times more likely to die in childbirth than me as a white woman. And her baby would be three to, two to three times more likely to die before the age of one because of complications due to low birth weight than me as a white woman. And when some people hear those statistics, they think surely it's something in their socioeconomic status, or their genetics, or something, ruling out all other factors. An African-American woman with my same job, my same education, my same income, my same neighborhood is two to three times more likely to die. Add to that fact that a woman who has immigrated from Africa, so she has African descent, has the same outcomes for, the same likelihood to die in childbirth, or for her baby to survive to the age of one, as a white woman in America. And the longer a woman lives in the United States after immigrating here, the more likely she is to have poor health outcomes. So what that story told me is that it's something about living in the United States that has stressed women and stressed moms like me. There's something about being a black woman in the United States that makes it harder to survive childbirth and harder to survive to the age of one. And it's an example for me in public health that if I don't work to address racism, then I am not working to cultivate the conditions to make people healthy. So I'm here to hear questions and learn how to do better in our community, to learn how we can partner more, that's my title, is engaging the community, to fight racism specifically as a health issue. So I'm so thankful, Demetrius, and I wanna do my best to answer any questions and also learn what more we can do. If you need a COVID-19 test, we're testing every day at the Health Department, and we wanna continue to promote, you know, healthy, safe practices, I got my mask over here, and continuing to save, save as we open up. So thank you again, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I wanna remind people that we are here for three reasons tonight, three reasons. We're gonna talk about the pandemic, COVID-19. We're gonna talk about education from that standpoint. We're gonna talk about George Floyd and human natural rights of equality, okay? So just keep in mind, I wanna remind people on the dot, just if you got questions, please, 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 ask your questions so we can get your questions answered tonight, all right? Next, we have Mrs. Ezel from CDSA.
I have arthritis. I really do have problems with my hands. Thank you so much for inviting me to come tonight. I don't, I'll talk first about what I had to say about COVID-19, and really that is that CDSA has some services that are available right now for people who have, are in a financial crisis that can be related to COVID-19. So if you have that situation and you're having a hard time paying your rent or paying your mortgage payment, you need to go to our website and apply online for some assistance, because we have quite a bit of cash right now to help people that are in that situation, and that's cdsauk.org. And we expect more money will be coming, and we also expect that as unemployment benefits run out, and that subsidy, unemployment subsidy runs out, that people are gonna have more need for that assistance. So we are geared up, and we are ready to help you, and we need your applications. We've made it as easy as we can, so please go on and apply if you need our assistance there. I think Maggie just had some great things to say. When I thought about what I had to say about the topic of, I think we just need to say it, racism in our community, I think about racism and how it impacts poverty, because CDSA is an anti-poverty agency. So I look at that and think about how it impacts what I do in my work, and I'm hoping tonight that I can learn some things. I don't think someone like me, certainly has led a privileged life, has a lot to say on this subject, especially not right now. I think it's my job to listen to what others have to say, but, and so I intend to do that. And I intend to use what knowledge I gain to improve the services at CDSA, or anything else I can do in my community to improve the situation for all of us. I hope that this isn't another one of those moments that passes, as there have been so many moments before this one, when we have seen the damage that racism does in our country, and we all stand up and wave our arms about, and then our concern fades. So I think that things like this need to continue to happen. We need to talk about it, not be afraid to talk about it, or be embarrassed to talk about it, or to confront our own implicit racism, and to, not to say that Enid does not have a racism problem, because we do. Every town in our nation has a racism problem. And so I'm here to learn, and I'm here to do whatever I can to make it better, and whatever little bit of access to power I have, or resources I have that you think might help, I'm here to use those. So just let me know. Thanks.
Keep going, Dr. Floyd.
All right, we're going down the line. So Demetrius asked us if we could touch on three topics tonight, and I'm gonna do that quickly. First off, do have one of our school board members here, our newest board member, Frank Nelson. Appreciate you being here with us tonight, Frank. I don't think we had any other school board members walk in. If so, I missed them. But first, touch on the COVID-19 issue as it relates to education, and I wanna give a shout out to a number of our folks in EPS and departments as well. You know, we left for spring break not having any idea that we weren't coming back, and then we were thrust into having to immediately come up with plans for not coming back, and putting distance learning plans together, and putting feeding programs together, and how we were gonna continue to feed kids and things like that. So I think our child nutrition department did a great job with devising those plans and making sure that they were implemented effectively such that kids could have access to meals. And then our IT department, and our assistant superintendents, and our administrators, and teachers did a great job of devising the distance learning plan that rolled out not only one-to-one technology devices, but also hotspots for students that didn't already have those. So a direct result of the COVID-19, then, obviously it affected all of our students, but especially those seniors that didn't get a chance to enjoy all of the activities toward the end of their senior year. So I just wanted to run through two or three dates here such that everybody knows. We had our Enid High School virtual graduation on May the 21st, and that went well. I appreciate everyone that participated in that. And then coming up on Sunday, June the 14th, we have two events for our seniors. We'll have May Fete down at Government Springs Park at 3:15 that Sunday afternoon. And then we wanna say thank you to Oakwood Christian Church for hosting baccalaureate services that night on Sunday, June the 14th at 6:30 PM for our seniors' baccalaureate services as well. Then fast forward to June the 18th, Thursday, June the 18th, we will have an in-person Enid High School graduation ceremony at Selby Stadium. We will not be issuing a limited number of tickets. If you've heard that, that's not correct. Everybody that wants to come can come. We just wanna recommend the following few guidelines. First, we ask that family members sit together. We'll have both sides of the stadium open, so we ask that the family members sit together, but then, to the extent that we can, try to social distance groups of families, either on the home side or the visitor's side. Secondly, mask for the audience. Secondly, masks for the audience members are encouraged but not required. And then lastly, as a safety precaution, we will not be able to shake hands with the graduates as they come across the stage, unfortunately. But Mr. Darrell will be presenting them and handing them their diploma cover as they walk across the stage. Second topic is education plans moving forward. These past two days, we participated in the first ever virtual COSA administrators conference. Much of that conference centered around the reopening of schools in the fall, what that might look like, thinking about developing contingency plans, et cetera. And the Oklahoma State Department of Education rolled out their Return to Learn Framework for reopening schools. Those are recommended guidelines, not requirements, because different parts of the state, as Maggie deals with all the time, are affected differently. You might have an outbreak in one part of the state, but another part of the state not affected very much at all. So we're going to take all that into consideration, including the State Department guidelines. And the next few weeks, we will be looking at that framework as we work together to develop our contingency plans for the next school year. But right now, we plan to start school as scheduled on August the 13th. And then we will have those contingency plans in place to fall back on if we need to. And then the third topic that Dee asked us to touch on are human rights and equality. Over the past two and a half months, you all know that millions of students across the country have experienced learning loss and instability as a result of COVID-19. Now, add to that the racial injustice that students have recently been exposed to in our country. That kind of exacerbates that situation. That creates added stress and uncertainty for students. And that's something that we have got to recognize and we've got to address. We want the best for all of our children, not just some of our children. And the color of their skin should not be a factor in that. Public education across the nation can do more to fight against and overcome racism, help repair the previous damage that racism has created, and attempt to ensure that the future looks bright for all students, including African-American students. This can be done by working to effectively implement on our end curriculum that is diverse and culturally sensitive by leading system-wide efforts that require that we ensure that cultural responsiveness permeates through all levels of our school district, from teaching and learning to buses and buildings, to all levels of professional development and community engagement. This morning, today, I was in a virtual Zoom meeting of the Association of Christian Administrators that was a precursor to today's part of the conference. And our guest speaker was Kenyatta Wright. Some of you might remember Kenyatta Wright. He, he's originally from Bayonne and Fort Gibson, Oklahoma, and played football at OSU, then played for the Buffalo Bills and New York Jets. And he's currently a director for the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He reminded us today that racial unrest is really a heart issue. And schools can become a beacon of hope in that resolution process. And that's what my hope is for EPS and that's what my hope is for schools across the country. I'll finish my comments with two points straight out of the Bible. The first one is Galatians 5:22 through 23, and it states, "But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Against such things there is no law." And then lastly, and this really is interesting that Demetrius mentioned this earlier, but this afternoon, my secretary Carol Gober reminded me that I should mention, which I already had on my mind, but that I should mention that it really is all about the golden rule. We need to treat all people, not just some of the people, as we would want to be treated, regardless and separate apart from whether or not the other person may or may not look like, act like, or be like us. Everyone deserves to be treated with respect and we should treat everyone else as we would want to be treated. The golden rule is as relevant today as it ever has been. Thank you.
It never fails, I'm an engineer, and they didn't teach us how to talk. And it never fails that you sit right after the guy that's really got a good presentation and really knows what he's talking about. So you kind of don't look so good. But I'm going to kind of speak a little bit here from the heart, but I'm not going to take very long. I'm glad to see everybody here. Also, I want to comment that we were really happy to see a crowd turn out on Tuesday night at city council meetings. There's a lot that goes on, on the first and third Tuesday, starting at five o'clock in the afternoon and ending hopefully around seven. If you want to know what's going on in the community and how the rules are made and that sort of thing, you need to come down there. We welcome guests. We rarely have guests. We normally have one or two. So we would like to see more of you come to the city commission meetings. Relative to the health, I, when I got elected, I never thought I would be sitting in the council seat having to make decisions on when you could go out to a restaurant or how you had to sit when you got to the restaurant. But we've had to do that. We've had to step up and do that. And thanks to folks like Maggie Jackson who giving, who's given us great guidance. We've come through this. We're still, we're still in it, but we're, we're surviving. So I appreciate that. In terms of education, my kids were educated in the Enid, Enid school system. I think we've got a wonderful school system. I'm sure there are issues that people are going to want to talk to tonight or maybe, maybe some things that I don't know about in the school system. But I feel like we've got a great school system. In terms of racism in the community, there's, there's always been a little bit of an underlying situation there. I was on the city commission before, back in the late eighties and the early nineties. But we need to hear from you. We need to, we need to come up with solutions. We, we hope you'll come up with, help us to understand the issues and how to fix them. So with that, I'm going to pass it along.
Senator Peterson, hang on one second. I'm going to, I'm going to skip to the end. I'm going to, I'm going to save you guys for the last. We have our, next we have our fire, fire department, police chief, fire department chief, Joe Jackson.
I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to be on the panel. I want to thank Gerald Gilbert, the city manager, for me being the panelist with the least prior knowledge of being here, about 15 minutes. Thank you, Gerald.
Joe, I'm not sure you're taking that for granted. I think there's at least one here that I really appreciate showing up and really just finding about it, out about it this morning. So, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I don't, hope I'm not mistaken. But I just want to say, on these three issues, I wish there was an easy answer for all three of them. There isn't. But I hope that we take the unfortunate incidents and the crisis we have going across the United States and take this opportunity really for leaders of minorities, leaders of communities to get together and work on a solution. A steady, honest effort to work out some of the relation issues we still have. It's time to address them. It's been called to our attention. And I just hope this is the time when leaders get together and they work on the issues to make it, an effort to make us more equal in both education and in civil rights.
For those, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Chief Brian O'Rourke, and I appreciate you all coming out tonight and coming here to ask questions. I don't have much to say over the, over the COVID issues. Obviously, that's changed our world also. 2020 has been quite a ride so far. Education, I think we have a great school system here. I think Dr. Floyd has got it well in hand. In the way of racial inequality and what's going on now, on May 25th, I watched a video of a man being murdered. And that man was not known to me, but his name is George Floyd. I watched the video over and over and I came to the same conclusion that it appeared he was murdered. I watched police officers taking action in totally inappropriate ways. It saddened me to know that my so-called fellow officers could be so callous with a human life. From that point on, the nation was thrown into chaos with sudden lawful protests, violent protests, rampant looting and destruction of property and more importantly, more loss of life. We currently seem to live in a society that does not listen. People seem to be incapable of civil conversation. It's time, and actually way past time, for everybody to listen. I spent the past 40 years serving this community and I care about Enid. I live here and of course, my family does too. I fear that my chosen profession and I fear for my chosen profession and all the officers as change needs to be made across the nation. I can't solve the problem alone, but I want to be a part of it. There's no room for racism in law enforcement and there's no room for inequality. And we're here to listen.
My name is Lenita Norwood.
As a reminder, hang on, Ms. Ms. Norwood. As a reminder, please, if I can give my panel to state your name, if you belong to a ward, if you're a commissioner, if you belong to a ward, just state what ward you belong to so the, so the audience to know.
My name is Lenita Norwood. I am the NAACP president of the Enid Garfield County chapter. And the events of the past week has been quite disturbing. We've seen this over and over again and it has to stop. We have to have strong conversations. We have to sit down and talk. When I became the president on last year, the first thing, one of the things that's a heart issue with me is criminal justice reform. And this is my friend right here. We have had several conversations. We've had group discussions on policing. We met with Mr. O'Rourke, Chief O'Rourke, also with Sheriff Cody Ham, Jody Ham. And we've also met with DA Mike Fields. We've had several meetings with these men and they have been wonderful and taken the time to speak to us. The NAACP was founded February 12th, 1909. It's the nation's foremost largest and most widely recognized civil rights organization. It's over a half million members strong. And believe it or not, and I think this is the most surprising thing to most people, the NAACP is not a black organization. It was started by 60 people. Only seven were black. The rest were white. So we have to come together and make this work. The reason that they started the NAACP because there were so many lynchings, so many killings that were happening, even like today. But there was so many strange fruit. And my friend back there, we've talked about this. And strange fruit were human bodies being lynched, being killed, being burned alive. This is not love. And oftentimes, people will throw a Bible up and say that's love. If you see me hurting and don't help me, that's not love. We need each other to survive. We need each other to move forward. The strategies for the 21st century for the NAACP, first is economic. There has been so many cases of systematic discrimination. It's not that people of color or that they do not have the qualifications. Sometimes it's just a systemic, we're not going to hire you because we don't want black people or we don't want brown people in our organization. It doesn't mean that I'm not qualified. We've all been turned down on positions with an education, able to do the work. So we have to get together and work out these situations. And that's what I'm here for, is to help. Let's build dialogue together. Let's work through these problems that we're having. Some are just cultural because you don't know me and I don't know you. But if we get to know each other, we can love each other. One, the other thing is education. Dr. Floyd has talked about that. A free, high-quality, public education for all. Everybody cannot afford private school. But our education should allow us to have a society where everyone is well-educated, where everyone knows how to have a career, have the qualifications for a career. Health, we, the young lady at the end talked about disparities in health. Yes, that is a problem. I grew up with no healthcare. The emergency room should not be anyone's primary care. That doctor should not be. What happens to preventive care? Healthcare is not a, it, it should be a right. It shouldn't be a privilege. Oftentimes, employers will employ someone under 30 hours just so they do not have to pay them the benefits. That's not right. And I say, I love the Lord, but I really don't love the Lord if I see his people dying on the streets and that's what we're seeing right now. The disparity is wrong. And we have to look down deep in our hearts and make that change. We have to make a difference. Public safety, like I said at the first, that's my heart issue right here and we've met many times. Oklahoma needs criminal justice reform. Hi, Oklahoma has the highest incarceration rate in the world. That's not good. We should not boast in that number. That's not a number to be proud of. So we have some things to work on, things to build on, things to grow from. Martin Luther King said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." When we look in Minnesota, that's a threat to justice everywhere. It happened in Minnesota, but it's still a threat to our justice here in Enid, Oklahoma. I just have two more points. Voting rights, voter suppression is, is rampant, especially in certain states. We've got to stop the gerrymandering. We got to stop having certain, changing the goals or changing the, the places where, the polling places where we'll use this because this will help us get in office. It's not right to prevent people or stopping them from, from voting. We don't have to do the literacy poll. We could pass that now. You don't have to, it, it's not based on whether or not you own land. It's not that anymore. So let's, let's just be fair. Everyone, get out and vote. That is your right as a citizen. And then we get, again, he talked about expanding youth engagement. We have to have something for our youth to do. We want them to move forward and not backwards. I'm sorry I was so tough, but again, my name is Lenita Norwood and I want to see us move forward. I want to see us move to the top. I want us to, I want to see us as a family because that's what we are. We're God's children. We all bleed red. If you go to a hospital and you need a blood transfusion, you don't care if it was a black man or a brown man or a white man or a yellow man. We know that's not even right, but we don't care who it is, just so we can live. So let's give everyone an opportunity to live.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. I want to remind everybody that the theme tonight is treat others as you would want to be treated. We're going to talk about a lot of different topics. Again, I want to remind you that if you have questions, I see the passion in Ms. Norwood's voice in her, in her body language. This is the time that you ask those questions. I don't think I've been here for 12, 12 years and I've had a forum like this. And so if you have questions tonight, this is the time to ask your questions. I want to remind you, I'm reading some of the questions that I, that I got. We got to stay, we got to stay on topic tonight. We have three questions. Pandemic, education, and systemic racism and human equality there. So next.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jonathan Waddell. I'm the commissioner of
I'm the Commissioner for Ward Four here in Enid, Oklahoma. The Bible says that if you say that you love God, but you hate your brother, that that man is a liar. In this day and age, we still struggle with an issue. And that issue is, is that we haven't grasped that concept that we are supposed to love our neighbor, to love our brother, the way that we love ourselves. If we can grasp that concept and that concept alone, when we look at another person, man, woman, or child, and see them as ourselves and love them as though we would love ourselves, we wouldn't even need to have this conversation. Now, I started out and I introduced myself and I told you I was the Commissioner for Ward Four. Before I'm the Commissioner of Ward Four first, I'm a child of God. And per scripture, the way that I believe, I should always be treated that way. After a child of God, I'm a husband and a father. I have little brown children running all over Enid and all over America right now. And it's a shame that in this day and age I have to be concerned and be fearful that one day they're going to come and come across somebody that is going to treat them less than or potentially want to put harm to them because of the color of their skin. The color of their skin, mind you, that was given to them by the God above. That's not right. After being a, a husband and a father, I'm a black man. I'm a black man in a country that served fifteen years in the military. I wore a uniform in order to be able to protect this country. I sacrificed other opportunities that could have paid me a whole lot more money. I would have had a whole lot more freedom in order to be able to make my own decisions about where I wanted to go, but what I wanted to do. But instead, I decided to put on that uniform in order to be able to serve people who hate me. I served those fifteen years and when the opportunity came to stop serving in the military, I went ahead and took it. And it wasn't long after that that I decided to run for city council in the city of Enid. And I was blessed enough to win that election to serve again. And I served this wonderful community with wonderful people, but still in this community there, there are people that I serve that hate me for no other reason but the color of my skin. None of that makes any sense whatsoever, not a word of it. In this time, in these moments, this, this poignant moment that we're, we're reflecting on who we are as people, who we are as a nation, it's time for us to make a decision. We see words written on stone across this country that all men are created equal in these wonderful words. It's time for us to look past the words and look at our hearts and decide if that's who we truly are going to be. Let's not let this moment pass like many more before it. It's time to make a change. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Commissioner Derwin L. Norwood, Jr. I'm the Commissioner of Ward Number Two. I thank God for being here. I thank God for each and everyone on the panel, for each and every one of you in the audience. Gerald Gilbert's our city manager and, and mayor and everyone that serves with me on the city commission and our senators that are here, especially our Chief of Police and our Far Chief. I'm glad to see them here. Today's not easy. It's not comfortable. But we have a job to do and we have a responsibility given to us by God. And I want to quote a scripture out of the Bible that many people, I believe, quote lightly, but when you really define the words and really think about them and take them at heart, you realize that God so loved the world. It didn't say that he loved certain people in the world, but the scripture says that he so loved the world, meaning entirely. And it says that he so loved the world so that he gave his only, that mean all that he had, to give his best, his begotten son. And not only did he give, he gave opportunity when he gave his son. And the scripture says that, that whosoever believeth upon him, that's all you have to do is just believe upon him. If you believe upon him, you'll serve him. Whosoever believeth on him should not perish. Why did it say should? Because God knew that everyone wouldn't serve him. So that mean that he's a God of opportunity and he's a God that gives us a right to make choices. That whosoever believeth upon him should not perish but have everlasting life. Scripture also says in the book of Jeremiah that every soul belongs to God. The soul of the Father belongs to God, the soul of the Son belongs to God, and the soul that sinneth, it shall die. Who are we as human beings to not love what God created? And he created every, each and every one of us equal. As far as the COVID nineteen, it's time to pray. It's time to take the advice of those who have studied what they know and the guidelines that have been given to us by those that are in the healthcare system and be responsible. As far as education, our educational system is disproportionate. Reason why I say that? Because I have two degrees and I would like to finish and get my third degree. But there was a time I could not qualify for financial aid. Why? Because I made too much money. Now I might be able to finish. I made a sacrifice. I chose to make a sacrifice to serve the people of Enid on this board. And I enjoy what I do. I'm willing to give up the things that I desire for myself to give back to my community so that lives can be improved for others. My uncle, my father's oldest brother, Ronald Norwood, told me, he said, whatever you do, no matter how high you go or how successful you become, always give back to the community that helped raise you. So that's what I'm doing. I'm living by that principle. And I'm blessed because I have no need for anything. God has put a love in me to where if I have to go without a meal so that someone else can eat, I'm willing to do that. As far as racism, believe it or not, I had to deal with it today. I had to shut it down today on my job. I will not put up with it. I had to rearrange how we were going to work due to racism. Someone say, well, how do you know if it was really racism or not? It's no different than knowing that it was hot outside today. When you know, you just know. And I believe that it's time for us to change. Because if we don't, we don't want to see the wrath of God come against us. Men can act foolish, but the Bible also says thou should not kill, no matter how we feel. And also I want to say this as I close. Being prejudiced is just as worse. I have a daughter. She's sitting in the audience right now. Thank God she's twenty-nine years old, but she's also biracial. And I had to comfort her and deal with her and encourage her and let her know, just because your mother and her aunt that's sitting right next to her here tonight, I made the choice to have a child with your mother and I'd never change it. But this is how you deal with it. See, it's something for this generation that's coming up. They're dealing with a lot. They have to deal with going to functions, Christmas functions, Thanksgiving functions, going to different types of, uh, uh, family reunions, not being accepted and hearing all this foolishness. So I had to encourage her and let her know. You surround yourself by those who love you and those who are related to you that don't love you, you distance yourself. That's how you deal with it. So I'm thankful that we're here tonight and I'm grateful to God and I pray and hope that change, positive change, really comes. Enid is a great city and there are a lot of great people. And I listened to Maggie Jackson, a really good friend of mine. And I heard the statistics. And I'm gonna tell you what took place in my mind while I was sitting there because I heard my dentist tell me the same thing. I said, well, if we have physical ailments against us and health issues against us, then why, why is anyone worried? Why do we have to be treated differently? We already have different things against us for whatever reason. Why are we such a threat? No one should be a threat. We're all God's children and we're all God's people. And God made each and every one of us. And there's not going to be a white heaven and it's not going to be a black heaven. It's just going to be heaven.
Thank you, Commissioner Norwood. I want to remind people, I want to thank the staff of Stride, Stride Center. We have refreshments in the back. Make sure you grab some refreshments. They are there waiting on you. We got cookies and, and something to drink there, so get comfortable, get relaxed. We're getting ready to come into the Q and A section, session of this, of this, uh, this evening. So make sure you are writing your questions down and you're getting your answers answered. Thank you.
Very poignant words tonight. My name is Jerry Allen. This is my second time to serve on the city commission, my privilege. I'm here tonight to listen to you all. I want to say that we are privileged. You might not be able to go to Washington DC and speak before Congress. You might not be able to go to Oklahoma City and speak before the legislature. But in Enid, Oklahoma, you can come here to one of our town hall meetings. You can come to a city council meeting twice a month, write your name down and come and speak to us about eating grievance or ask any question. And we don't hide anything from anybody. So thank you for attending here tonight. I'm going to pass it on to George and I'm here to listen to what you have to say tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I think most people know me. I'm George Pankinen, Mayor of Enid. Before that, I was the Commissioner for Ward Six. Just a little bit of background on me for those that don't know, I also came by Enid, Oklahoma as a military member, stationed here from eighty-eight to ninety-one. Went to Chanute Air Force Base in Illinois from ninety-one to ninety-three, then made a decision that I wanted to retire from the military. Well, I didn't go back where I was born, which was St. Paul, Minnesota. I didn't go to any of the eight states that I was stationed in, any of the eight other station, uh, states I was stationed in. I didn't go to Korea, didn't go to Germany or Europe, which are other places that I lived. The place that I found that I liked, that struck me the, as the place that I wanted to live and raise my family was Enid, Oklahoma. I came back to Enid, Oklahoma and I've been here since ninety-three. I continued to serve on the base, working for contractors for a while and then came time to retire. So I decided I'd run for city council and then mayor. And so I'm not very good at retiring, to be quite honest. But I have a heart for service, as do everybody on this panel. All of us want to, it, it doesn't matter if you're serving in a policeman's uniform and a military uniform, there's people that are just born that want to serve their fellow man and they're all up here. So that's, that's kind of where I've been and what I've been doing. Let me address each of the three issues that we talked about. First, I'll talk about COVID nineteen. That was a really tough issue. It was a tough issue for a couple of reasons. I, I guess what you could do is just close everything down, everybody stay in their house, nobody go anywhere for a couple of months and maybe it won't be here when we come back out. That's unrealistic. That can't happen. I received some criticism, why is this store open but my store is closed? We've had a family business for thirty years, we might lose our business. It's really tough trying to decide which ones do, can stay open, which ones can't. But if, if you need food, you got to have a place to buy food. And if you don't have the places open to buy food, what are people going to do? They're going to get in the car and they're going to go somewhere else, maybe to find the virus that we're trying to hide from and bring it back. So you got to try and walk that line between how can I protect the health of the people in the community and at the same time balance the economic needs of the people that make the community what it is? So it, it was a very fine line. I think we did a pretty good job of doing that. Not everybody was happy every day, but I think, I think part of the reason that our statistics, our health statistics with COVID nineteen are so good is because we as a community said that it was important for us to do that. It was important to make sacrifices both individually and economically and, and we decided to do that. So I guess people can second guess all the time. I think when you're in a position of leadership, what you got to do is look in your heart and not worry about, I think ten want this and nine want that, so all good. That ain't what you do. When they voted for the people that are on the panel, they voted for the character of the person, not about an issue. Because you don't know what the issues are going to be in a year or in two years or while somebody else is still in office. You got to find out the character of the person and say, that's the kind of person I think that'll make the decisions that I want to represent my community. And I think that's what all of us do every day. So enough of that and we can talk more about that if you like. Education. I think city support, I think Garfield County support for the education system has been phenomenal. It's one of the reasons I chose to settle here. I don't have any children that go through the normal school system anymore. My kids are like in their eight, late, I have one child and he's thirty-seven, but he's developmentally disabled. The school system here was very, uh, appealing to me in the way that it treated that population and every other population. So I like, I like that. It's another reason that I settled here. But I think the school system here is very, very good. I'll point out, one of the people that I know, have come to know is a guy named Roy Bartnik. And I don't know if everybody knows this, but last year, I'm pretty active with the Air Force Association yet. So last year we nominated Roy Bartnik to be the Teacher of the Year. Roy Bartnik's background is he was in the military, served I think twenty-three years in the Army. And he went through a program called Troops to Teachers. And it tries to take people that are military members, uh, that are ready to start a second career and move them into teaching profession. He was an ideal candidate for that. If you're in the military, it's all about high tech. And if you look at all the STEM topics, I think they all hit every single thing that happens in the military. So he was enthused about it. He got to teach, he got to talk to kids, he got to tell them about what he did all through the world. He was just an enthusiastic educator. Bottom line is he won the, the Chapter Teacher of the Year last year. We nominated him for state. He won Oklahoma State. We nominated him to the nation. He took second in the United States for teachers. They told us that it was so close, they encouraged us to put him in for that award again this year. He has one chapter in state and he's now being considered for National Teacher of the Year again. That's the kind of teachers we have in the Enid Public School System. I know I'm pointing only one person out, but I'm telling you that he's representative of many other people that are in, in the classrooms. Let me talk a little bit about some of the students that have come. that have come out of Enid, Oklahoma. One student, when I was working out the base, one of the guys that worked for me, his daughter was going to school. She did very well in school. In fact, she ended up becoming a Rhodes Scholar. She is now less than 40 years old and is considered one of the 50 best economists in the world. And she teaches, I think, at... I can't remember what school. Anyway, her name is Melissa Dell. And you may have seen her, but she's a famous person. We've got a lot of famous people that come from Enid. And some of them come from Enid and the education system in Enid. Another one that I'll point out, more recent example, 2016 graduate of Enid High School. His name was Samuel Perez. Well, Samuel went through, and he was accepted into the United States Air Force Academy and Annapolis. So he had to decide which one he wanted. While he went through Annapolis, he graduated with Class of 2020 this year. You don't just get into Annapolis by putting in an application and hoping for the best. You have to be that kind of student. You have to be in the top percentage. Samuel was and is. Well, he got denied, as many educational opportunities happened this year, he got denied the opportunity to throw his hat at the big celebration at Annapolis. But his mother reached out to me. She works on the base, packs parachutes on the base. And in fact, oh, last... Spring of last year, we had a T-38 that went down in the western part of the state. The pilot was saved by the parachute that his mother packed. That's how close the relationships are on base. That's how close the relationships are in the city of Enid. So we threw a special ceremony for him. It was in the Wing Headquarters Building. And Colonel Simmons, the Wing Commander, swore in as first Annapolis grad and welcomed him as a brother of arms in service. So education, I think, is very important, and I think it's done very well in Enid. Can you find something wrong with somebody, some class, somewhere? Yeah. Can you find that anywhere? Yeah. But you know what? We have a really good school system here, and I'm pretty proud of that. Okay, the final topic, and I think the one that most are here to hear about tonight. I'd like to say, if you think racism is gone, you're in denial. Racism is not gone. Have we come a long way? Yes, we have. But if you think everything is equal today, you are very, very, very much mistaken. In all the states that I was stationed in, including Korea and other nations like Korea and Germany, I've seen racism almost everywhere. But you know what I also noticed? I came in the Air Force in 1970. And one of the things that I did notice was there was racism a lot in the communities I went to, including the communities I came from and where I was born and raised. One of the things that struck me after I came in the military was, there were some there, but you know what? Markedly less than I seen outside the gates. And I think that is still true today. I think there's less racism on the base than there is off the base, if you want to look at it that way. But I think it's something that we all have to understand is an issue that is not solved. It's an issue that is in work and needs to stay in work. Okay. So I think that's what I had for opening remarks. I'd like to pass it to our City Commissioner Gerald.
All right, I'll just say a few words. My name is Gerald Gilbert. I have the privilege of being your City Manager and having worked for this city for about 15 and a half years, with maybe the last five and a half as a City Manager. I can tell you that at the city, we get called upon to address many, many, many problems in our community. And the problems that we're here to talk about tonight are probably the most serious issues. So I'll just say a few things. There's three topics tonight, three primary topics, as Demetrius has told us. I can tell you, I am certainly... I'm not an expert, really, on anything, and certainly not these three topics. So for the most part, what I'm going to contribute tonight, and what I've tried to contribute in my tenure with the city and as City Manager, is to listen, help facilitate communication, and realize that I'm in a unique position. And by the position that I'm in only as City Manager, I do have the ability to help address change where it needs to happen. Whether it's in customer service, whether it's addressing somehow systemic racism where it exists, and everywhere I can. So I do want to say, I do live in Ward 4. Jonathan Waddell is my Commissioner. I don't know if he knows that or not, because the problems that I see, I typically don't take to him. But I encourage you to do that. I do appreciate the most rewarding thing that I've experienced in my job, and it has been fairly rewarding, but I will tell you, it's been very challenging, too. No more challenging than now with the COVID issues, the racial injustice issues, and the economic issues that we're facing. But the rewarding part is working with the people. From the city employees, who are a diverse group and work very hard every day to try and provide the services that we all want and deserve in this community. It's been rewarding to work with the leadership. Not only... Well, all these leaders you see sitting up here today, your elected officials and the community leaders that do all the wonderful things that they do in Enid. I know for the governing body here, I just want to say that I really appreciate what they do. Some of them, as you've heard, have been two-time folks. So they serve as volunteers. So they do this because they want to. I do it because I want to, but also I get paid, and I get paid well. And so, but I want to say that I really appreciate what they do. And so although I'm not an expert in any of this stuff, I am very encouraged to be a small part and get to sit up here today and listen. I'm encouraged by what I heard Tuesday night at the City Commission meeting. I'm encouraged by what I hear tonight here. And I'm encouraged by the things that are going on in the community. So as someone that is here, not just here at this meeting, I live here because I want to live here. Like a lot of people in here, I'm here because my parents were here. And my parents were from here. My grandparents were from here. And so although I didn't go to high school here, because we moved away to Creston for a while, I'm a Hoover Hornet. So Enid's where I am because it's where my kinfolk have been from. But I'm still here because I want to be here. And so just like everybody else here, I want Enid to be the best community it can be for everyone, regardless of their race or any other thing that people can use statistically or otherwise to separate and divide us. So I do like the family feel that Lenita talks about, and I appreciate being a small part of that. And now I'm gonna pass it off to your other elected officials so they can tell you about themselves and make their statement.
All right. My name is Chad Caldwell. I'm the State Representative here for Enid. And so I just want to first say thank you for coming tonight. Demetrius, in your opening, you said that you had people come and ask you, say, "Well, I don't know who my senator or my representative is." So if you don't know, I'm your representative. But let me take it one further. If you've got a problem, I can give you my number at the office, and I can give you my email, but I'm gonna give you my cellphone number. So if you need me, call me on my cellphone, and I'll get back to you. So now everybody knows who your State Representative is, and you got a cellphone number right in your contacts. So hopefully, we can solve at least one problem here today, Demetrius. So one of my roles at the Capitol, I'm the Chairman of the Health Services Committee. And as such, I dealt a lot with the COVID issues. So Maggie talked earlier that Oklahoma, and specifically Northwest Oklahoma, but Oklahoma as a whole, we fared really well compared to the majority of the other states. I think Governor Stitt did a tremendous job in the circumstances. I can assure you, there is no manual or playbook on the second floor of the Capitol where the Governor's office is on how to deal with a global pandemic. The issues that the Governor faced and as well as certainly the mayor and the City Council, each one of them are hard and have different consequences. But I think all in all, I mean, I can assure... My guess is that everybody here would have done maybe a little bit something different. But all in all, I think we did a good job. Just a couple basic statistics with that. Oklahoma ranks 39th in the country in the number of cases of COVID-19. We rank 35th in the number of deaths. It's down... Our number of deaths are down almost 20% this week compared to last week. So we were also one of the first states to reopen and to start that process. And our numbers have continued to remain pretty positive in that regard. So again, I think that's a credit to the leadership of the state. While I may be a legislator and your State Representative, my primary job and one on which that I got to see COVID up front, I'm the Executive Director of Hospice Circle of Love. It's a nonprofit hospice here in Enid. As a hospice, as you might imagine, the population that we take care of certainly is gonna qualify for the high-risk category. But not only are patients are high-risk, but oftentimes, their family members are high-risk. The long-term care and nursing facilities that we go into are high-risk. And our organization, we felt a special duty and a higher calling to make sure that we protected not only our staff and our patients, but this community. And so, look, I think you can look all around the country to see different ways in which different states handled this pandemic. The mayor talked about, you know, locking everybody up and maybe we'll come out when there's a vaccine. Well, we didn't do that. We didn't do that at my organization. We didn't do that in the state. But what we did do is we listened to the health experts, and we made smart choices and good decisions. And we've protected the community for the most part. Obviously, there is no perfect solution to that. We get that. But again, I'd say overall, I think we did a pretty good job on that. The second topic, community awareness and equality. Demetrius, you said it was... I paraphrasing a little bit, but you said it was obvious that what's going on right now in our country's not okay. And I can't think of a better word other than obvious. Chief O'Rourke talked about what he witnessed and what we all witnessed on TV, the murder of a man on TV. And it's obvious that that's unacceptable. And so, you know, we've talked a lot about that. We're gonna talk a lot about that. And it's a topic that deserves that conversation. I had a call at my office in Oklahoma City that I returned yesterday from a young man named Stephen. Are you here tonight, Stephen? I talked to him yesterday. He said he may come. No? Okay. Well, I talked to Stephen, and he asked kind of what I thought on things and what I thought we should do. And I said, "Look, what this has to start with is an open, honest, and frank conversation." And I want to say thank you for being here tonight to helping all of us and all of us together participate in that conversation. Because I can guarantee you that the people up here on this panel, we do not have the market covered on all the right answers. And it's only gonna be through conversation with everybody, starting with looking in the mirror. But it's a conversation with each other, and that's the way that we solve that issue. In our instructions, Demetrius said, "Give them your heart." Well, healthcare is my profession, but education is my passion. And he said he was gonna give us the hook if we go too long, so I won't talk much more. But I want to say this when it comes to education. My priority and my philosophy in education is pretty simple. We ought to make it that every child in the state, no matter what town they live in and no matter what neighborhood their parents can afford to live in, they all deserve the same shot at equality education. And the reason why education is my passion and why I think it's the most important thing this state does is because it affects everything else the state does. It affects the other issues we're talking about here today. It all comes back to education. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be here today, to talk, but you've heard it before, it before, but to mainly listen and to engage in that dialogue and that conversation. So with that, Senator, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chad. I am State Senator Roland Peterson. Served District 19, takes in about three counties, three and a third countery, counties. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I want to thank Demetrius for hosting this event. I feel his heart was really in this meeting, especially when he talked to me on the phone the other day. And he just said he wanted some resolve and he wanted something to come out of it that would be beneficial. And I just feel honored to be a part of the listening group and hopefully offer some maybe suggestions or just mainly hear what you have to say. I was told to speak from my heart, and like I said, I think Demetrius definitely did that as he facilitated this meeting. And I want to thank you all for being here and your interest in it also. As far as the COVID situation, a lot of statistics have been given here tonight, and they were very informative, except the speed on some of them. But Maggie and Chad, you had some excellent statistics there and enjoyed hearing about that. But as far as my office goes, from the time that we heard of the pandemic that was upon us, we engaged quickly with the county health department, making sure they had PPE to take care of the situations that they found themselves in. And the same way with Integra's Hospital, Dr. Krista Roberts on a regular basis along with Finney, and we made sure that they had the adequate equipment that they need under the circumstance. And this was a pandemic that I'm sure that most of you had never, all of you had probably never experienced anything quite like this. And we were in unprecedented territory, and I think that we handled the situation. We don't have it completely resolved yet, but it appears from the statistics that I've heard this evening that we have it under control, and we'll just need to keep with the process, with the CDC guidelines, and we'll be on top of this. As far as education goes, I was a former educator. I was not in the profession for a long time, but I realized the value of an education. My parent, my mother was a 32-year teacher, my brother was a 32-year teacher, and my wife was a 25-year teacher. I've been around the education industry, or I've been around education for a long time, and I realized the importance of it. And I know when this pandemic broke out, the education people had to do something drastically different, something that they had never experienced before. And I think moving forward, there'll be some, kind of a new normal as far as education. But it's going to be important, and I want you to know that I will see, I will try to see that the education is fully, is properly funded in order to do whatever they need to do to facilitate learning and make the education possible, best education possible for every child in the state of Oklahoma. As far as the natural rights, I was brought up in a Christian home, and where I was taught the value of just relationships and how important it was to get along with everybody. And my mother, who was my fourth grade teacher, on her classroom, she had the scripture of Matthew 7:12, and it says, "In everything do unto others as you would have others do unto you." And as a child, one of the first songs that I ever learned to sing was, "Red and yellow, black and white, they are precious in his sight. Jesus loves the little children of the world." And we're taught to be like Jesus. Thank you.
Let's get ready to rumble. You all ready? We have resupplied in our, in this evening where we're going to start taking some questions. You guys were scaring me before because I didn't have hardly no questions, but now I got a handful of questions. So I'm going to ask you, I'm going to go back over this for just a brief second before we start the segment. It must be related to COVID-19, education, or what we know is going on in our country today with natural human rights. If you have written down the question that is not related to those three topics, you will have a chance to ask that question. It would just be at the latter, the tail end, okay? I want to make sure that what we're here for, we stay on topic and we keep this thing moving along. Before we start any questions and answers, I want to tell you a quick story of why, what happened to me when I first joined the United States Air Force. In 2001, right after 9/11 had happened, I decided that I wanted to come in and serve. Scared out of my mind, but I was ready to serve, right? So I went to med station to do all of my physicals and work out and do the duck walk. Many of us that served in the military, we know what a duck walk is. Make you look really stupid, to be honest with you. And they signed me up, I swore in, and just shortly after that, I was shipping off, and they gave me a little packing list. And when they gave me a packing list, they say, "Here's the items that you need to pack with you to take off the basic training." Well, if you know me, when they say packing, I don't really know how to pack. If they say pack three pairs of underwear, I'm probably packing five pairs of underwear. They say pack four outfits, I'm probably packing six outfits. Because you never know what's going to happen, right? Going to come up to an emergency. And so, I packed my duffel bags and I was going to the airport to ship off, and I get to the airport and I talked to the flight attendant, and I set my bags up, and they was over 50 pounds, both of them, over 50 pounds. So we know what the limit was, and I know when I was coming in the military, I was broke. I didn't have any money. So the flight attendant said, "It's going to be $75 fee per bag. What are you going to do?" Well, I know I didn't have no $75 per bag, and so I had to get rid of some things. So I pulled myself out of line, opened my bags up, started looking for things that I wanted to toss out, but everything in that bag was personal to me. It had something of value. It was something that was close and near to my heart, something that I really needed to go off the basic training. So I didn't know what to pick, but I knew that I was racing against the clock because my flight was getting ready to take off, and I didn't want to be late to that and miss my flight, so I had to make some decisions, some hard decisions. So I pulled out towels that my mom, valuable towels that my mom had bought me that I packed with me, had to throw them in the trash can, had pulled out a pair of pants, a couple of pair of pants, had to throw that in the trash can, had pulled out some other toiletries and had to throw that in the trash can, all to get under that 50 pounds. Why do you think I'm telling you that? Excess luggage was going to cost me. I was going to be paying the price if I decided to carry around my excess luggage. Excess luggage. Tonight, before you get up here and you ask your questions, we all have been through something in our lives. We all have experienced a thing or two once or twice before. We all have experienced injustice, been misunderstood, been brutalized. Some of us have been through horrible experiences. That's excess luggage in your life if you haven't dealt with it. So if you want to keep, continue to pay the price and pay for your excess luggage, then that's more than your choice. But tonight, this town hall represents an opportunity for you to let go of that excess luggage, talk to the people that can help you to get to the place that you want to get to, be understood, get some clarification, know some direction, get some guidance, and let's put some things to work for our city. We know what's going on in all the parts of the country, how these riots is building up. The reason why I started this tonight to here right now in less than a week, because we have talks of activists coming into our community, destroying our community. We have heard that. We have peaceful protests that's been successful already, but we want to continue that peaceful process. That's your First Amendment right. But we want to do it in a decency and in order. So when you get up here, it's not, it's not time to throw jabs, to throw blows, it's time to state your case, state your question, get clarification. Nobody's here to punch nobody out, but we just want answers, and this is your shot tonight. So remember that as we go through these questions. The first question is for Dr. Floyd. Christopher Dolezian? Come on up, my friend. You have the microphone. Christopher Dollson is from Ward 2. Ward 2.
Hey, Azion. Thank you all for being here, I really appreciate that. I think it's a really important event for the community. Dr. Floyd, just had a quick question for you. Ah, thank you. In terms of inequalities in schools and access to college and higher education, so what's being done, right, to address systematic racism and income inequality that prevents lower-income students and minorities from having an equal access to higher education? What sorts of programs and resources are made available to them so we make sure that everyone has an equal shot?
All right. I'll touch on a few things that we currently have underway. A few programs that I think helped get at that. One is the African-American Mentor Program that we have that Nola Richardson and Chuck Kearney are heavily involved with. I want to thank those gentlemen and the other folks that helped with that. And the main goal of that organization is to provide mentorship for African-American students, for them to be able to talk with role models that have been there and done that and can kind of help them along with the counselors and the teachers and administrators to work their way through some of what you're talking about. Because if you're a first-generation collegegoer, you may or may not know how the system works or what you need to do to go about getting grants or scholarships or what the process is, or if it's better to go to a major college right out of high school, or it's better to go to NOC and then Northwestern, or a different route. And then where does Career Tech fit in there? So that's one program. We've got the Black Heritage Union that Ms. Norwood is sponsor of, that they take groups to Langston every year, and I think that's beneficial. But other programs that we have that I think are beneficial, Jonathan Gray leads our Coach a Kid program, and they mentor kids not only at the high school, but also throughout our school district, that provide students an opportunity to know that there's someone other than just a teacher in a classroom or an administrator on the campus, but somebody from the community that is really taking a vested interest in what is happening in their lives and kind of attempting to show them the way. And if it's at the high school level, well, that topic might come up that, you know, if you don't know how to get from point A to point B, well, here are some steps that you can do that. And obviously, in regard to counselor, I mean, scholarships and getting into college, the counselors are well-versed in that, but the teachers have a role in that as well.
And do you have statistics on some of those programs, success rates, anything like that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take that car back. Harley Bradford. Harley Bradford, is she or he? Just left? Okay. Saved that one.
I suppose this is addressed specifically to Chief O'Rourke. I am grateful for the experience of going through the police academy, but now we all are highlighting what practical steps are being taken in the training of officers now to avoid abuse.
Jerry, training with the officers is a constant. The topics shift, and a lot of the topics are set by the state, set by CLEET. But to address these issues, there is training, there's going to be de-escalation training and things along those lines. A lot of these things that have come up here through the George Floyd incident are new. So we're going to be taking a look at some of our training, the way we handle things, and our policies.
And is there increased scrutiny of background for officers to get rid of so-called bad apples?
There is, there is quite a background process, and if you recall, we went through that, it takes about four to five months from application to testing. And our issue is right now is that we're short because we can't find good applicants. And a lot, we might have 40 applications and we wind up hiring one or two because the rest of them failed. So it is very tough in the hiring process right now to get good applicants. Now, will I tolerate bad police officers? No, I don't. And if we have an issue, I'll get rid of them. I have no problem with that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nick Jackson. Nick Jackson represents Ward 5.
Hi there. Thank you all for being here tonight. I had two questions. One kind of touched on something that Mayor Panikin said. The question is, what is systemic racism? Can we just talk about that for a moment, maybe just define that, and then how is it displayed? That's my wife over there. I know that she knows a little bit about that. I don't know who should fill the question, maybe Ms. Norwood. I have asked, had conversations with some people and just, what does that mean? Racism was, you know, that's gone and done and over in the 1969, you know, Act. So, yeah, Civil Rights Act. So maybe we could talk about that. The follow-up question is, as a white male who doesn't believe that he is racist, what is my role in combating systemic racism?
Could I answer that question? Okay, this is what systemic racism is.
Take the mic.
This is what systemic racism is. Mayor, I'm not hopping on you and your Rhodes Scholar. Cecil Rhodes, whom the Rhodes Scholarship was named for, is responsible for killing over 300, excuse me, 3 million Rhodesians, which is basically South Africa. So anyone who takes that scholarship is saying, "I don't care about all these Africans that was killed." That's part of systemic racism. The other part of systemic racism is the fact that historically, what we're seeing now in this country is the same thing we saw at the end of the Freedmen's Bureau, which was after the Civil War and all that stuff. So when people of color became in political positions, which lasted about maybe four years, that was then taken out. Jim Crow came up, the Klan came up. And so what did that do? And I'm kind of upset that there's no one from the banking institutions here. Is, is you were then able to take someone else's land that didn't belong to you and then kick them out. Like, I'm part Native American, so the Trail of Tears, I had family in the Trail of Tears that died because they were given blankets with smallpox in them. That's systemic racism. When you go to a bank and you can't get a loan to get a small business because you're brown and inherently there's biases there, maybe you don't make enough money, that's systemic racism. Systemic racism is also when my cousin in the 1970s here in Enid got kidnapped by Klan members. That's systemic racism. Systemic racism is when you have an educational, a process that doesn't allow for the brightest students to actually go to Harvard, Yale, Princeton, or some of these other schools because of...
Close the mic.
Okay. I'm sorry. Because they're not allowed to. That's systemic racism. So when you look at people who couldn't live in certain areas, that's systemic racism. When you have people that are the first fired and the last hired, that's systemic racism. Now...
Can I jump in? You mind?
Pardon?
Can I jump in?
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
I appreciate it. Okay, so let me broaden this for you. When you start, systemic racism is basically racism that is based in a system. It's not subjective based on an individual's personal beliefs, but it's a system that is put in place that is set up to oppress. And so, if we go back to the 1960s and 70s, 1970 specifically, this is just one example. There's dozens I can give you, but I'm going to give you one, and I'm going to show you the system, how it builds to where it affects people today. So there was a system that was put in place that's called redlining. You've probably heard about it, and if you haven't, I want you to do some research about it. Redlining was a process that was set up to where if you looked at the county, there were little squares, little, you know, hexagons that were drawn, and those particular areas were the only areas that were, that minorities were able to exist. There was a little circle drawn around them, and that's where they would go. Banks, legislators, people in power made determinations that those areas won't get funding, that they won't be treated in an equal way, they wouldn't have equal representation in their own political processes. And so what happens is, is that over a period of time, those areas become what you consider today the hood and the ghetto in these areas. And it wasn't because those people just were inherently ignorant or poor, it's because the system was set up to be designed to where if you wanted to upgrade your home, like you would go to the bank today in order to be able to get a loan, in order to be able to upgrade your house, or to renovate, or to make it, those places didn't get those funds. Now, this is especially important because homes are one of the most practical ways to where you can retain wealth or gain wealth or build wealth in your family. You can build it up. Your home may start out at 15,000, you could get it up to 65,000 throughout the lifetime, and you can pass it on. That land, that property, it gains value. But if those areas are never injected with wealth and are not given the proper representation, then they become to get worse and worse and worse. Now, here's how it really gets bad. The way that our systems works in terms of education, they're driven by property tax. So if the homes in those areas are low and they don't generate any property tax because of the jobs in the homes in those area, we now have a delebated or lower education systems. And so now you have this system of wealth inequality and education inequality in this area. And we know that in order for you to be able to gain opportunity, in order to be able to obtain wealth and that prominence that everybody wants, you need finance, you need education, and you need opportunity. Now, just in that system, that one system that we just talked about right there, all three of those things have now been affected. And this took place back in the 1970s, but it was taking place still in the 1980s, and there's data and statistics that talk about some places in America, it was still into the 90s and 2000s. This systemic racism that we're talking about isn't something that we're talking about 50, 60, 70 years ago. We're talking about systemic practices that still affect American communities to this day. That's systemic racism. And there's dozens of examples that we could talk about, but I don't want to take all night on just that subject.
Okay, we do need to answer his second part of his question, though. How can he position himself to overcome systemic racism?
I'll talk all night if y'all let me. Anybody else want to chime in? So... So, here's the responsibility of every responsible American. Every responsible American is responsible. We live in a democratic republic. And if you don't know what that means, that means that we are responsible for our own governance, we're responsible for the people we elect in order to be able to represent us, a representative form of government. When you identify that there is something wrong in your community, your responsibility is to go to your elected official and demand change. Now, here's the key and one of the reasons why we're in the problem that we're in in America right now, is have, we have one of the most uneducated voting populaces in the history of this nation. What I mean by that is, is that we have, unfortunately, we don't have enough people who spend enough time finding out not just what their issues are, but the nature and the cause of those issues in order to be able to find solutions to those problems. That means now the onus is on each and every one of you to get education and find out not just that it's wrong, but why it's wrong. And then you inject yourself into the process to ensure, not that you just come up every four years to elect a politician, but you ensure that that individual does exactly what it is that you elect them to do. One more point I want to make sure that we understand. Everybody turns out every four years when we're electing president. The mayor and your city council members do more to affect your everyday life in your community more so than a president ever will. You may not believe it, but we affect a whole lot more than what you think you do. And I can tell you, every two weeks, we have a meeting and we talk about things that affect right here in Enid, Oklahoma. President Trump, whether you like him or not, probably doesn't even know the city exists. And that's not right or wrong, that's not a dig on it, but the reality of the situation is there's thousands of cities. You've got seven representatives that represent you here and they talk about your issues every two weeks at a city council meeting. We have less than ten people from the populace that show up every two weeks. This is a community of over fifty thousand people, less than ten show up every two weeks. If you want to know how to fix your community, get involved and find out what's going on.
Very well spoken, very well spoken. I want to get some females out there that have questions. So, Jalise Williams, is Jalise Williams here still? Jalise Williams, one more time? All right. Maria Eves.
Good evening and thank you to the panel for taking the time to visit with the citizens of Enid. And we really appreciate that. I addressed the city council meeting last night about what I feel to be a racial profiling issue in our community. So, I thought about what kind of solutions I could provide to the local council in the way of systemic problems within our own police force. And some of those that I came up with were to defund units and operations where a bias has been demonstrated or misconduct is clear. And when I speak of that, I speak of referring back to the stops of the Street Crimes Unit and the arrest of the Street Crimes Unit where blacks are overrepresented disproportionately, only make up 3.5% of this city's population, yet represent on average 14% of all stops and arrests by that specific unit. Furthermore, that specific unit has had problems in the district court where they've not provided surveillance reports and all the discovery required in a criminal proceeding. And to me, that's a waste of taxpayer money. You're funding a special unit that's bringing bad arrests to district court and then getting cases tossed because they refuse to provide the evidence for whatever reason. Maybe there's something problematic with it. I'm not sure, I can only speculate as to that, but that's not right. I think we need an independent investigation of citizen complaints against the police unit, or police department. We need to establish an independent civilian review board with disciplinary authority. We need record-keeping and data policies that require racial and ethnic data for all stops and arrests to be recorded by this department. We cannot know the depth of a problem if we refuse to collect the information and the data required to show that or demonstrate that. If there's nothing to hide, we should not be afraid of the truth. If the truth reveals a problem, we want to have the data to reflect that. That would also be something I would encourage the state representatives here to enact on a state level. We need to defund recruitment efforts by the police department that focus on violence and militarized policing. And I refer back to the YouTube video that's up on the Enid Police Department website. That is basically just, you know, there's nothing advertising our city in a positive light in that video. It's a whole lot of gun carrying and, I mean, it just, it doesn't look good. I'd like to see us abolish the use of militarized police vehicles at public schools and community policing events. I'm glad to hear Chief O'Rourke say that they're going to be looking at de-escalation training policies. I think that's great. I think we need to fund the hiring of a full-time employee at the city police department to respond to open records requests and establish reasonable fees for research and redaction. Because I've spoken out on social media before, I've had other citizens approach me about what they could do in regards to their own complaints. And when I suggest to them to go down to the police department and fill out an open records request, and then when they find out how much it is, they don't want to pursue that. I think that policy of charging astronomical amounts for redaction and research fees goes against the spirit of the ORA as intended. And it is prohibitive, especially if we know for a fact that poorer neighborhoods and people of color are policed greater. And those are the people who are looking to get these videos, but they're not accessible because the cost is too high. It's not reasonable. And we need to ensure the use of body cams at all appropriate times. I have people, my own son, body cam was not used even after, you know, they were already donated to the police department. They should have been in use at a stop he was involved in. And there were several officers there and not one had body cams. So, that puts a person and even the police in a situation where it's your word against theirs. That's not fair to anybody. And last but not least, this is a question to the state representative, both of them, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Caldwell, who are here today. I was explaining to our local city council last night that in 2019, the National Academy of Sciences came out with a study that the results said the number one cause of death for young black men in America was extrajudicial killing by police. I think that we need a stronger racial profiling law enacted in this state. The current law allows for the discriminating agency or the discriminating police department to investigate themselves. And since this law was enacted back, I think in 2013, or at least from 2013 on, that's where the AG reports start, not one report has ever been substantiated. Well, when you have a department investigating themselves, there's no way they're going to find that one of their officers acted in regards to race inappropriately. That would be a liability. So, that's a law that has no teeth. I'd like to see the actual Attorney General's Department be allowed to investigate those complaints. That needs to happen and that needs to happen immediately. Representatives, state representatives, especially you, Mr. Caldwell, as somebody who is charged with public health at a state level. Death by police is a public health issue for young black men. I have three black sons. Will you commit to supporting and enacting a racial profiling law that has some actual teeth? That's the end. Thank you.
Thank you for your statements and I wrote down some of the other ones and we'll take a look at some of the other stuff you mentioned. As far as the Attorney General's, we've looked at some of those investigative capabilities for other issues. So, we have started to address the general topic and the general issue that you've discussed. I don't know that we've dealt with that issue yet, but I will definitely take a look at that and we'll visit with the Attorney General about that. Can you repeat your last question again, since you addressed it specifically to me? I want to make sure I answer it for you.
Well, what I'd like to see specifically is a racial profiling law that does not allow the discriminating agency to do their own investigation and that the AG's office be allowed to conduct those investigations. Also, the way the current law is written, short of somebody using a racial slur or saying, "I'm doing this to you because you are black," if, even if I provide all the data in the world that shows there's a problem with the way the current law's written, unless somebody flat-out uses an N-word or some other racial epithet, you cannot prove based off that high bar that it was racial profiling. However, you know, you can collect data from police departments that show there's a problem there. But we don't, the way our law's written, we don't want to see the truth. We don't want to reveal the truth. We should have, we're not afraid of the truth. If the truth reveals there's a problem, then we ought to have systems in place that address that directly. The way we don't collect data, so we're just sweeping it under the rug. I mean, we say there's not a problem here. The AG reports say none of these claims have been substantiated over six years. There's not one single racial profiling report in this state that has been substantiated. That's because of the high bar. That's because police are allowed to investigate themselves. And that's just not a law that has, I mean, its purpose is to placate, to say we have a racial profiling law. Pretty much that's it. But as far as any remedy or any solution being allowed by that law, there's none.
I apologize, Ms. Eves, we have to wrap that question, these questions up.
So, just real quick, I will reiterate again that, as I said, I understand the general sentiment of your question. We have started that process in other entities as far as taking the investigative abilities outside of the department in question for the, to avoid any real or perceived conflict of interest like you described. And certainly, I think the issue described makes sense. We've done it, like I said, in other areas. It certainly makes sense for that. So, we'll certainly visit with our public safety folks, as well as our Attorney General's office and see where we are on that. And then we can work towards doing like we have in other areas, doing something like that. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eves. And make sure you got his cell phone number because he gave it to you. All right, next question is for Mr. Jim Robinson, representing Ward Five.
Hello there. This is a question for the state legislature. Did Oklahoma spend $2 million on hydrochloroquine? And what will they be doing with it now that it's kind of been rendered ineffective?
I'm the health guy, so I'll get that one. I'll take that one. So, the quick answer is yes. I've talked about this before. I don't mean to speak for you, but I will just speak in general. I am quite confident that if Governor Stitt had an opportunity to buy hydrochloroquine, passed on that opportunity to buy hydrochloroquine, and that was proven to be an effective treatment, and when we came to try and procure that drug, he would be criticized for not have acting in the manner he did. So, again, I don't mean to say for you, but I think that's a little bit of the challenge that we face, is you try and take the data and make the best choice you can in a very quick timeframe. We all are familiar with the issues with PPE, Personal Protective Equipment. One of the reasons that we have such a challenge with that, as most of you know, is the majority of that product is manufactured in China. When China realized the severity of this virus, they cut off the exports of PPE to anywhere outside of China. Our supply several months behind. And you saw, what you saw is a mad scramble across the world to try and procure as much of that as possible. While that's going on, you have simultaneously a conversation about hydrochloroquine. And to try and ward off a similar item, the governor made that decision. My understanding to answer the second part of your question, Maggie, you may know, if I'm speaking out of turn, correct me please, but my understanding as, you know, that drug is used for lupus and...
Malaria.
Malaria, thank you very much. So, my understanding is that we are able to shift the usage of that and we're able to actually get out of some of the, from the financial arrangements of that, is my understanding. So, we're, the plan is to shift the usage of that. So, it's not, we're just going, we're not just going to bin it. We will still utilize it from that regard, but, you know...
We're basically stuck with the bill then, right?
Well, I mean, we're going to use it for another purpose, I guess, is what I, is how I would answer. So, is that, Maggie, is that, are you familiar with that at all? Or is that...
I can attest to, at the time it was purchased, it was being studied and researched and it was pending as a potential promising treatment. I know there was a mad rush to look for acquiring treatment at the time, so I don't know any plans for what is going to be done with it, though.
Okay. Well, I've got one more question for the Health Department. Is there any, like, pre-qualifying circumstances or costs in getting that test you said at the, for getting tested for the COVID? And will it show if you've had it? Does it test for the antibodies?
Great question. At this time, we're testing with a PCR test, which detects the presence of virus in a person's body at the present time. The antibody testing can be valuable to someone personally, but it doesn't tell us what a patient might need for treatment or for potential exposure of other people. So, at the Health Department, we do a PCR swab. And right now, we are testing everybody who calls. That wasn't the case in the beginning, but now we're able to accommodate the appointments. We, you know, prefer that people have something that puts them at potential risk so that we can, you know, save our tests. But, yeah, we can, we can, we're testing about fifteen people a day at the Garfield County Health Department.
Okay, is there a cost with that?
No, no cost, no insurance needed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sir, I want to jump in there on that $2 million purchase.
Yes.
You know, you have to realize that we were projected to be 5,000 hospitalizations whenever this deal... We were projected to be 5,000 hospitalizations whenever this began. There was a lot of emotion at play. And I think, you know, second guessing what the governor did, you know, he would have looked really smart if this thing would have materialized into that and we had that type of remedy for it. So, in defense of what he's, in defense of what he did, I guess... So, in defense of what he's, in defense of what he did, I guess, that's what I'm saying. According to Mr. Caldwell, you know, we have other plans to, to not necessarily just figure it was a bad deal.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right, just in case you guys didn't catch it, Representative Caldwell's number is 580-278-9665. You're welcome.
I want to add mine in there, too. I don't want to get Representative Caldwell ahead of him, but mine's 580-829-3156. And that line's pretty busy right now, but you're welcome to call me, you're welcome to come by the Capitol. Several of you out there in the audience have been by my cap, been by my, by my office, and you're welcome at any time.
Deborah Norwood, Ward 3, 5, Ward 5. That guy don't get a cookie because he told you he was 3.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yep.
Okay, so my question is, and we've already addressed this, the educational, okay? What kind of training do the high school counselors receive to help them remove personal bias? Now, the reason why, I, I, I understand you all saying how great the education system is and how you love Enid High and all that. I have a daughter that went to Enid High. She graduated in 2001. I know that's a long time ago, so, anyway. I ask this because she, she had a 4.0, you know, she, there was Langston, they, she wanted to go to OU, and don't get me wrong, Langston is a wonderful school. And I understand now you have Ms. Norwood, which is my sister-in-law, she has this bus that goes to Langston. But what if our children don't want to go to Langston? What if they want to go somewhere else? And my daughter, at the time, didn't want to go to Langston, but her counselors even, they geared her to Langston. She told them she didn't want to go to Langston. She had already had an, had made up in her mind that she wanted to go to OU. So I'm like, if that's where you want to go, you don't have to go to Langston. You can go anywhere you want, because I feel like she had, you know, the education to do that. So, they never contacted us, they never offered us anything, and of course, I guess they're offering now, because Lenita goes to Langston. Now, she, they even, they even offered her a free ride to Langston, to go to Langston. When she told them she didn't want to go to Langston, they said, "Well, what if we give you a free ride? Then would you go then?" And she still said no, because she had just made up in her mind she wanted to go to OU. And she went to OU, amen, and graduated, amen, doing a good job, amen, got her graduate, her, not graduate, what do you call that?
Masters.
Masters, amen. She's a teacher in Washington, amen. But that's just my question to you all. What, what, you know, what are you educating your counselors? If, if my daughter or any other don't want to go to Langston, you know, what, what, what do you, what kind of work or help are you leading them? Or, you know, now I'm all nervous and I can't talk to y'all like I want to talk to y'all, but, you know, what are you, how are you helping them? You know, you don't have to go to Langston if you don't want to go to Langston. You can go anywhere you want to go. But our counselors need to let our children know that, and they need to help them if, if that's what they want to do. Does that make sense?
To use Commissioner Waddell's, to follow on what he was saying before, that sounds to me a lot like systemic racism. That's what that sounds like to me.
Sounds like what?
Sounds like systemic racism that we were talking about earlier.
Okay.
The counselor sees somebody and tries to steer just down this path, not any of these paths, but this path.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's probably another good example of that.
Okay. So what are we going to do about it?
Ms. Norwood, did you want to say something about that first? Or did you want me to take it?
You can take it, sir.
All right. Well, obviously, I can't speak to anything about when your daughter was in school, because I've only been here six years. But the issue that I can speak to is some of the programs that I already talked about, I think, are helpful in that. But also, we have an initiative in our school district called Great Expectations that is a character education program that's beneficial not only for students district-wide, but for the faculty and staff district-wide as well, part of which addresses the, the cultural responsiveness that we deal with and attempt to meet in our school district. Some of that would get at what you're talking about, is you can't look at a student, at a student's color and say, "You need to go here, or you need to go there, and if you don't go to those two places, well, then you can't go here." It, it's, it's ingraining the expectation that we are meeting the needs of all students, and that's what we're trying to get at through that program. So, that's just one example of what we have in place that I think is trying to address what you're getting at.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We're going to try to speed this up process, so just be sure to ask your question, make sure it's clear, not too lengthy, so we can all get out of here at a decent time. AKA Morgan Freeman.
I think my question, good evening, Milton Mitchell. I live in Ward 3. And my question is about, it's to school. And what specific things will occur with school curriculum that will affect the racism situation? Because, and I'm saying that from a light of, are we going to move forth in a way that will have a curriculum that's really more truthful-based? Like, Columbus didn't discover America. The Indians were already here. So are they going to do things that will, in the school system, that will be a lot more adequate and a lot more representative of, of all people and not just white people?
I think that that may be one of the bright spots that comes out of this whole George Floyd issue, is that it is shining a light on that topic and, I think, going to enhance the importance for school districts of ensuring that cultural responsiveness gets permeated through the strategic plans that we have in place and the seven goals that we have in our school district. And this idea of making sure that cultural responsiveness is incorporated in all those areas, but there's a second part of that, and to your point, is making sure that history is reflected appropriately rather than inappropriately, like somebody 100 years ago might have written it.
That was way faster than a couple of nights ago. Kensington Jordan. Representing Ward 5.
Hello, thank you so much. 10 years ago, I became a citizen of Enid, and been here off and on with the military before. My first exposure to, to being part and welcomed into Enid was by multiple realtors being told, "Whatever you do, don't live on the East Side." And I went on to ask the question, "Well, what's wrong with the East Side?" And looked at a couple of houses, and they said, "Just trust me. I've been here a while. You don't want to live on the East Side." And we can talk, it's one thing to be able to say that we have issues, it's one thing to be able to say, "Yes, women want to make a change," but let's be honest, words are cheap. And nothing has changed in 10 years. Yeah, go ahead. Nothing has changed in 10 years, and the red lines still exist. It's the road right out here. And developmentally, when you look at businesses, and we, we can say, we can say that we want to see a change in Enid, but if we don't actually do anything, and I'm not pointing any fingers, but the reality is, we have a responsibility. If we continue to remain silent for the next 10 years, you are making a choice to allow the red line to continue to exist. If we continue to allow, and when businesses come in and we tell them, "You need to develop over there," then you are remaining silent on an issue that continues to draw red lines. If as a city council and businesses and, and people, that we continue to say, "Well, that's a place where you're going to make more money." There's a book called The Culture Code, and it gives three very important variables, and to be able to create a culture for any business of which people will remain feeling safe, that will be an environment where people can grow up, and it gives three principles. One principle is this: you have to create an environment which people truly feel safe. You have to create an environment, the second point is, create an environment where not only people can feel safe, but the leadership is willing to admit mistakes that have been made and be able to be transparent with people, which I can give it to the City of Enid, I think you guys do a pretty good job. And the third thing is to be able to create a cause such that everyone can contribute to it. But the one thing that, the problem that, which leads to my question, is that what is the cause of people rallying around on the East Side of Enid? Because I don't see it, and I haven't seen it for 10 years. And if we're going to continue to say that, you know, "Yes, absolutely, we want to see a change," but what is the change? So, what is the action to get rid of the red line of this highway right out here, to start developing to the great people that live over there? Because there are so many families. There are so many families who need you to step up and engage with business and talk to the people who can write a million-dollar check to be able to develop things, such that when people move into Enid, they're not told, "Whatever you do, don't live on the East Side." So what is that? What is being done? Who wants to answer that?
I'll jump in there, just the city manager, to help my, just to tell you what I think. If, if you're talking about infrastructure things, I would say this building we're in right now is a great example, if you're referring to Van Buren as the, as the red line. This building was renovated in about 2012, about $10 million, actually about $22 million spent on this complex. This is a great example, but you may not be talking about this specific area. Let's talk about a road that just got paved, all the way from Van Buren to University on the East Side, Broadway, with nice new asphalt, concrete streets and sidewalks. Is it enough? Absolutely not. But is it improvement? Yes. Another good example is Randolph and Maple, that are in the local street programs this year. And so I'm just jumping on infrastructure, because I think that's part of what you're getting at. You know, yeah, yeah, trail, and so, so I'll jump on that, some of the other commissioners can, from the infrastructure perspective. And I get it, that's small stuff, but I just want to make sure, we probably, I've got, I've got one commissioner near and dear to me that tells me frequently that we don't tell people what we've done enough.
Yeah.
And so we, we probably don't. So I know I've got a great communications director in Derek Silas, who is constantly trying to tell people what we're doing, and so certainly, we can always do more, but I thought I would take that one, and then I'll shut up.
No, I'd like to take that one.
I'm glad you did, because I was going to call on you, Mrs. Yell.
Well, the red line isn't Van Buren. The red line is a lot farther east. So I don't think this facility has much to say about the East Side. I've lived on the East Side for 30-something years, so, and I have seen a lot of improvements over those years. But, and, and the red line issue with Vance has been off and on during those years. That issue rises up every once in a while. I don't think the red line is what it's traditionally thought of, as in, people won't loan money past that red line. I don't think we have that issue. But what we do have is a horrible bias against the East Side. People don't want to live there. And I think that a lot of people, and in fact, I know this, I run across it all the time, don't even travel to the East Side. They've, they've never even been there. They think of it as some scary place. When I moved here in 1984, my husband was fresh out of law school and got a job offer here, and we didn't know anything about East Side or West Side. And we looked at several neighborhoods, and we discovered that we could get a lot more house for our money on the East Side. And so, and it was in a lovely neighborhood, and we lived there our entire life. We raised our kids, our children there, and we never had any problems there. We had lovely neighbors there. And I still live on the East Side in a different place, but it's a bias. A lot of people will say to you, say to me frequently, "Oh, I, I grew up on the East Side. Used to be a great place to live. I went to school at Phillips. I, I went to Adams. There was the little Olympics at Adams School, it's on the East Side Elementary School. I hear about it all the time. My parents lived on the East Side, but they don't want to live on the East Side." And I don't know how you overcome that. I've, I've often thought if I had all the money in the world myself, I would make an East Side school the best school in town.
Yeah.
And then maybe somebody would want to live there and send their kids there. But people are afraid of poverty, and they're afraid of people of different colors, and so they don't want to live there.
It's not an offer this, and then, and then I'll shut up. I've been told several times that I've learned a lot, I didn't know a lot about racism, honestly, because I've never experienced it, and I've had to ask some of my friends, be like, "Hey, one, is this real?" And about a year ago, they said, "Is it real? Are you kidding me? You've been to Walmart? I had no idea." You know, I've, I've been told recently that if you remain silent, you are making a decision. And to what I would offer to you in the Council and Office of State Representatives, is that if you're not actively trying to do development, not just roads, and I do appreciate, I, I, I do appreciate what's been done on the infrastructure, but if, if we are remaining silent on the business development side of getting organizations, getting commerce, getting businesses, getting business lenders, getting business people to think and develop over there, then we are remaining silent. So please, hear the claps of the people who see what they're, what they're asking you to do and no longer remain silent. We need commerce on the East Side. If you want to see change start happening, start bringing businesses and telling them it's a great place to be. Start encouraging them to be there. Start helping them to find land. Start, start having the discussion and talking about how the East Side is the place to be, instead of allowing the first exposure of people who are going to be the future residents of Enid to be told, "Whatever you do, don't live on the East Side." It's time to change it. Thanks.
I'd like to say something to you. I, I want to comment on your question and what you had asked. South Grand is the beginning of the East Side, once you cross the tracks on O.N.K. Garrett. I'm the Commissioner of Ward 2. I, I live in Southern Heights. It's the most blighted area in Enid. If you drive down there, you'll see the most vacant lots available for development. So what we actually need to do is start investing some money in Southern Heights, where it's most blighted and, and where the land is available for development. As far as the banking part of it, it is true that they don't want to put money in that area, because it's a liability. One of my best friends, Chuck Kearney, he wanted to build a house about two or three years ago, and he was denied the money, because he was told that if he cannot cover a certain amount of the money to develop a new home for him and his family, the bank was not interested. Systemic racism. It exists. So we do need to do something about it. I'm not saying that just because I am the Commissioner of Ward 2, but I'm saying it because it needs to be fixed. And the only way it can be fixed is that we fix it together.
Thank you, sir. Terry Motte. Maybe run over here? I'll charge you a cookie.
I'm kind of feel like it's getting colder here.
Just step outside.
My name is Terry Motte, and I am originally from... My name is Terry Motte and I am originally from the Marshall Island. I'm sorry. It's a bit emotional for me because our voices has been so quiet for a long time. And standing before you all. I'm not standing for myself. But for the people that I stand with. And represent. I moved to Enid in 2007. And the moment that I arrive in Enid. I quickly call Enid at all, my second home from my, from my island. I have to work two jobs to get my family here. The moment when I received a phone call from my in-laws here in Oklahoma. That I'm going to travel to the United States. The thing that came to my mind was it's a great opportunity. And I am going to jump on a plane and go to US. I never knew. That once I am here in Oklahoma. Or maybe elsewhere in the United States. There will be so many doors for me to open. Looking for opportunities. I have few questions that I want to ask. That I know as an advocate for the Marshall East people, not only here in Enid, but the entire state of Oklahoma. We've been trying to look for answers for so many years. Sometimes it's kind of hard. Because we never knew where and when to get the answers. Enid is one of the areas in Oklahoma where you can find more than 3,000 Marshall East live in our county. All these Highlanders. Many times they've been treated unequally. With the laws. In schools. Have work. And even leaving as a tenant. Renting houses from their landlord. There are times when they're accused because they're breaking the laws. Not because they want to break the laws. But they don't understand the definition of the laws. So my first question is. And I'm so happy that I stand before the mayor and the commissioners. I've never done this before. Because we have this much Marshall East in our community. Is Enid ever trying to do something so that we can have a voice? In your government or in your community? That's going to be my question, first one. Second one is. In 1996. We were eliminated from the Medicaid program. That Medicaid program we used to eligible for state Medicaid, even the federal Medicaid program. But right after that, we still ineligible ineligible today. As Marshall East, we pay our taxes. Both to the federal, to the state and even Enid. But if I'm not finding a job and I'm having COVID-19 tomorrow. I have to pay from my own bucket. Because for the state of Oklahoma. Is one of those states that we're ineligible for the state Medicaid. And yet we still pay our taxes. So my question is. As the commissioners. State representatives, senators. Is there a way we can help? Do the voice for this minority community? And I guess my last question is. Many of us are still scary because of COVID-19. And I just mentioned the Medicaid that we're not ineligible for. And many of our families, you can find lots or one or two head of the household or family in the household. Unless tomorrow, one of us is having the virus. We don't have anywhere to go. Is there any plan for the Enid, our city government? To have a shelter or an isolation place? For those who will have that COVID-19 virus? Thank you very much.
Anybody got that?
Well, I'll start with, I'll start with the the comment about wanting to have a voice for the Marshall East. Certainly, we've already talked tonight about attending and voicing your opinions to the city council, both in chambers. And you know many of us and see us and we're approach, I think most of us are approachable at all times. I'm sure we are. The other thing is if you have that larger contingent. I think I would try and find one of them interested in actually running for elected office. And, and get behind them and help them actually become one of the commissioners representing you on the, on the commission. So those are options that are available, not easy options, but they're never, never easy options. But if you want to voice, the opportunity is there, I think, to do that. But it's not going to be an easy, easy road to go. As far as eligibility for state Medicaid, I can't answer that. Do you guys know anything about that?
At this time, I don't think there is a, an offer for Medicaid expansion. Now, some of the health centers have addressed your health issues down through the years since they've been established. There will be an opportunity through the state question, I think, maybe to be involved more with that Medicaid expansion with the Marshall East.
I would advise everyone to vote on June 30th. Question 802. Expansion of Medicaid. Now we, just hearing his heartfelt concerns for his community. That's one reason to vote for 802. We have to let our voices be heard. We have to care enough. We have to love enough. We see this man is in tears for his family, for his community. That's why question 802 is so important, the expansion of Medicaid. Let's vote on June 30th.
I was going to comment that Terry and I have discussed that there are other communities in our country that have made some exceptions locally. And one of those is allowing Marshall East families because they, they have as a different, under the COFA agreement, they cannot run for elected office. So there are some school districts that have given exception and allowed them to vote in school elections. And we learned that there's 800 students in Enid public schools. And so there's opportunity for representation for that large number of students. And as well as with Medicaid, they, states have waivers specifically for COFA citizens. Where they acknowledge the reparations that were made historically for what happened on the Marshall Islands. And they have created specific waivers for that group of people because they're in a different classification than other people with different immigration statuses. So Washington State and Oregon, right? Have, and, and Terry is an expert in those exceptions that those states have made possible. For a group of people that are not a large population, but have, they have been impacted by the sandwich of coming from, to a country where we do not have the cultural resources that they're used to having on the islands. They have, they don't have the foods that, that are accessible to them. They don't have culturally advocates at healthcare facilities. So they are using emergency rooms for care, which is a cost that is passed down to our health system. And so there are ways that we can support them and provide preventative care that states have made exceptions for.
Aren't some of the states, aren't they tying to prenatal care? Aren't they doing some special things?
Or specific?
Yeah, I have read somewhere that, and Terry, you would probably know this more, that there are a lot of Marshall East women who give birth with no prenatal care. And that there have been some exceptions in other areas to allow them to have prenatal care.
Sherry, aren't there navigators that can help with the Affordable Care Act? Because most of these folks aren't going to be possibly eligible for Medicaid. And one time a year, you can, anybody that's in a household or has a social security number can get help through the Affordable Care Act for little to no money.
We, we do, we do that every year and Terry's part of that also.
Isn't that where they need to go? So they need to know to come to your office and, and get with the navigator and
No, we don't have a navigator at CDS. Say that funding was cut. We no longer have that position. But there are volunteers in the community that every year during open enrollment make special efforts to work with the Marshall East community to offer assistance. And they have been accessing that. But lots of Marshall East people do our low income enough that they would be eligible for Medicaid except for their status.
My mom is on the Affordable Care Act. And what happened is the premium is too high. And I'm the one that taking care of paying for the premium and even the co-pay. But we don't really have any free Medicaid program like, like the one they have in Oregon. If I leave tomorrow to Washington, which I'm not planning to do it. I will be eligible for Medicaid program in Oregon or Washington State, but not in Oklahoma.
It sounds like to me that there's a disconnect. This man needs to know where to go. And if we don't know, we don't know, but we need to find out where we can send him. And maybe you can advocate for those of your community so that they will be taken care of. I mean, it, it doesn't rest well with me with you not knowing the possibility of to where, a place where you can go to get some help. This is America. And also, aren't they citizens of the United States of America? Then we need to find out how we can help you.
Yeah, we are, after 1996, they changed terminology to non-immigrant. And it has non-immigrant and as a compact of free association. That's our treaty with the United States government. We can come and go without passport, no visa. What happened also in return to the treaty. The United States is using one of our Highland as a miserable range program. And it's called the Ronald Reagan miserable range program until today. So our treaty with the United States is a special treaty that hardly the COFA citizens. What I mean by COFA state is Marshall Island, HSN or Federated State of Micronesia and Republic of Palau. And every 10 years, they'll have to rewrite the, I mean, 20 years. The provisions. And in 2023. The provision under the financial hate to our government. And even citizenry in the United States will be hinted in 2023. So that's, that was my heart concern. I was going to bring that up. Because we're not sure if the financial hate still will be the continuing program for us or not after 2023.
Terry, can you remind us how many nuclear weapons were tested on the Marshall Islands?
From 1940 to 1945, that's when the World War II took place in our Highland. Right after 1945, from 1946 until 1957. The US government dropped 67 nuclear bomb in our Highland. So most of our chronic disease and health issues are related to those bombs. And we were promised that moving to the United States, the government will take care of us. But yet we are here and still ineligible for the Medicaid program.
So if I can jump in on that, because Terry, you and I, you and I have had this conversation before. And I mean, we've had a couple of different conversations on it. And so just so everybody understands, as you mentioned, it's not, it's the status of the Marshall East is different from an immigration standpoint than, than others. And there are certain benefits of that status and certain drawbacks of, of that status. And so one of the things that we've talked about, and I've visited with the folks at the healthcare authority. And I've visited with our federal delegation to try and make some of those, some of those changes. And no matter what side of the aisle you're on, the one thing I can assure you that I think we would all agree is that government doesn't move very fast. And that's not a good enough answer for the problem that you're describing. But it's not one of it's not one, because I know you, you worked with Senator Anderson. I mean, this, this, this issue, you've been, you've been a champion for this issue before I was in the legislature. And I just finished my six years. So I know you've been working on this issue a long time and it's it's a, it's a, it is a difficult change, but it is a change that shouldn't be as difficult as probably that we have. That unfortunately it is, it is made out to be. So I can tell you, like I've told you before, and we've had, you know, conversations, you know, down in Oklahoma City and whatever. That we'll continue to, to keep working on and trying to, excuse me, to try and deal with that issue. Look, I came from, I originally grew up in Colorado. I moved back here. My wife and family was here and I chose to raise my, my, my kids in Enid. Before I moved to Enid, I have to admit, I was ignorant of, of the Marshall East and, and most of my colleagues down in Oklahoma City. When I talk about the Marshall East. They kind of give me that cocked head look like a dog sometimes gives you, and they don't understand what I'm talking about. And Enid is a, is a unique place in our state when it comes to, to this community. But it's part of our community here. It's not just the Marshall East community. You all are part of our community here. And so it is a, it is a challenge. There's no question. It's a real challenge. I don't mean to diminish it at all, but I, those conversations have gone on. They've been going on for a long time. They will go on. Like I said, we've talked to the federal delegation as well to take up some of those issues. On a federal level, there needs to be some action there as well. So you know, I wish I could tell you here today that absolutely Senator Peterson and I are going to get it done. What I can tell you is I know you've talked to Senator Peterson about it as well. So we are continuing to work on it. We're continuing to educate those in the state and those of our colleagues at the state on the importance of of this issue because it's one unfortunately that has flown under the radar for Because it's one unfortunately that has flown under the radar for far too long. So my guess is many in this room probably know you because you're a pretty, you're a pretty good champion for your, for your community. You do a great job. And so, I just say it to say, it is something that we are aware of and that we're working on addressing. And I'm, I'm sorry it's taking as long as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two more questions, y'all. So stay put, we're coming to an end. William B. Maxwell?
So what's the problem? Is there a problem? If we're not going to do something, is it going to go away? Well, let me limit my comments to the criminal justice system. I'm that more familiar with it than anything else. The criminal justice system doesn't care. So it's not going to go away because there is no voice, none, in the criminal justice system that says we need to have reforms. The two reforms that I want to address to you both, racism is a totally different subject, okay? I don't, I didn't grow up with racism, and so I grew up in a totally white town. Count Basie's band couldn't sleep in my town. They had to drive 30 miles away to get a motel room. I didn't realize that. There are a lot of issues like that that are still alive. That's ignorance. And why we're here, and this has been hit on several times by several of you, is we have to address the issue of ignorance. The other portion I want to address this to is, no matter what system you create, no matter what type of reform you want to talk about, it's going to fail. It's a human system. Every human system fails. Dr. Floyd was asked a very pertinent question earlier. Do you keep statistics? Well, does the police department keep statistics, Brian? I appreciate you, Brian, okay? I've known Brian a long time, and I'm not here to cast dispersion, so I'm here to say, we like ignorance. And I don't understand that. So part of what I'm trying to say is, if you really want to fix something, what are we going to fix? It's real simple. It's all of us, because we don't think it's going to affect us. Why are we still having this discussion about police violence after Missouri, New York City? I mean, how many different communities you want to talk about? How much are we going to learn from their efforts? The city of New York City has 55,000 police employees. They have a budget of $6 billion. That's within a hair's breadth of the state budget of Oklahoma. Now, do you, you think they want to fix the problem? I'm going to close with this. I addressed this issue to Jerry Askins about 10 years ago. Some of you know Jerry. She was Lieutenant Governor of this state, she ran against Mary Fallon when we elected her. And she read my book, and I said, okay, what did you think of my book? And she said, Bill, it's great, but, you know, Oklahomans want to lock more people up. We've already commented on that a little bit, because we do. We are still the number one incarcerator of women. Just think about that for a second. Women are the part of the species that bear our young and are best able to give the earliest years of their life to nurturing and controlling the destiny of our future. And we lock them up. So as long as we don't change, how are you going to do that? Best quote I've ever heard in this is, I don't think the comic strip is available anymore. But Pogo, long time ago. One of the characters said to the other, "Where are we?" And the response was, "We've met the enemy, and it is us." Thank you.
Frank?
Talk a little while, give me, make up some space, give me some time to get there.
Need some time to get there, miss?
Yeah.
Got it? Dee, would he be more comfortable sitting and let him use your microphone? You want to sit?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I've come this way and sat and listened to everyone talk. Now I want to talk, and y'all, I guess, have to listen.
All right, we're here.
So I'm going to tell you just a little story about my day. It's going to be real short. I've been watching the coverage on the news every day that this, the George Floyd situation has been going on. I've cried, I've gotten mad, I've yelled. I wanted to kick something, but I only got one good leg, so I would have fallen over. But that's to say, I'm not able to protest with all the people that I see. And then I noticed something about the second night of footage, which was, it was started, I'm talking about it messed me up. I saw black people, and then I would see mounds and mounds and mounds of white people. And then I see Latinos, Mexicans, some Chinese people. Until it got to the point that they outnumbered us. Something like 60/20. And 20% other, whatever they may be, I don't know the color of other, but... And I was talking about this, I'm in college now. I was talking about this in the Zoom class. And I just shared my perceptions that, you know, the instructor, we were doing a little meet and greet online. And then he said, well, if we just go around the room and tell a little bit that what you think about this unrest. And I just told my feelings. And I told him, I started by saying, I sure am proud of you young white people. I sure am elated to be in the company of y'all. Because y'all have taken up this fight like it's y'all's fight. And one of the, one of the girls, I think she may be 19 or 20, bless her, a young thing. She said, "I didn't ever notice what you said about all the white people." And then another rung in, and she chimed in and said, "I didn't notice that either. I hadn't even been watching it." And while we're in the Zoom class, she goes, mutes the Zoom, and turns the television on and begins to watch what's going on. And today is like the, was the memorial. And she said, while we were in class, all this has been going on? So I'm closing here. If it had not been for good white folks, and I say this, I'm not sarcastic, because it used to be sarcasm related to that term every time I said it. But from my heart, if it were not for good white folks, man, we'd be waiting for the next lynching, the next killing, the next murder of somebody black. If we had to deal with it on our own, because we've been dealing with it on our own since we've been here. And we have got nothing. Now, what, the towel, whatever, the young fellow that was just up, that guy? Yeah, the Marshall Islander? Yeah, he's in for a long road. He can't, he can't fight all of this, all of this systemic racism. He's not going to be, he said he's been fighting it for six years. Nothing against you, Representative, but he stood here, and I feel like he got a taste of the song and dance that he's going to get from now on. He will probably die, him and his ancestors, and this case will be pushed up the road until another administration comes into power. And the same thing. Boy, but when them good white folks get behind you? When they see your cars? When they look at you and say, hey, listen, I don't have to like black folks. I don't have to pledge to kiss a black guy every day. But I want him to make it, because when he make it, I can make it. Sometimes people just want to live without problem. I know it's impossible all the time, but surely, we could have done this years ago. Last thing, just imagine our lives without systemic racism. Imagine our lives, oh God, without police brutality. Like on May Bay, when the only thing they use the police for was to get a cat out of a tree.
Good Lord.
Yeah, the fire department, you're right. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see him, and I can't tell you all apart without being in uniform. Being in uniform, being in uniform. So on that light note, I thank you for picking up the, picking up the mantle and going on with us. That doesn't diminish us, and it doesn't elevate you. It just brings you all into the fold, all of us in the fold. Hey, man, I'm not going to kiss no, no black guy, but let him live, let him make money. He ain't going to do nothing but go down to Walmart. I go to Walmart almost every other day, mindlessly, and spend my money. You mean to tell me I go down and do that, and then I got to worry about being brutalized on the way back with my stuff for Walmart? Okay, I'll shut up now.
Thank you, Frank. Last question of the evening, Damian McKinney, from Ward Five.
Thank you, Frank, we needed that.
So first of all, I'd like to say, we need more children to become teachers, especially children of ethnicity. I never had a teacher of color growing up my entire life. And, you know, as a teacher who does discuss some of the things in our history that many people kind of steer away from, it might be more powerful coming from somebody, let's just be honest, that's not white. But we need more people that are willing to discuss those things. And some of the students and people in the room that know me know some of the things that I'm talking about. I mean, Ms. Norwood talked about strange fruit earlier, directly at me. And then the other thing I would say is, we need more people involved in service. So we need more people in committees and commissions and getting out and doing things, not because it's the cool thing on Twitter, Facebook, and so on, but because it's the right thing to do. And then I'll close with my question. What assurances and safeguards do we have in place to help small businesses in case we have another lockdown? I mean, my doctor was talking about, he expects there to be at least three waves. But then to add to that, I was just, you know, I bought a piece of furniture from Mark Wiss Furniture. It saw the 9.1 tax on there. And could we do a small tax increase as a shelter fund for local businesses? Or maybe even low-wage workers that might be out of a job to sustain, you know, the community? You know, I wouldn't mind a .2, .5, I mean, I need to do another penny tax on that. But just something to set up some type of fund to help our community sustain after all of this goes away. And that's my question.
I guess, I guess I can start with that. Yeah, 9-2 is, is pretty high. And the problem you run into when you start getting up to the upper level of sales tax is you end up losing money. Because what happens is people say, okay, I'm not going to go to Mark Wiss Furniture. I'm going to go to the next city because their tax is less, so I get the same piece of furniture for 25 bucks less. So it's, it's kind of a false impression that you get if you, if you think all you're going to do is affect a little bit. Because people will look at that and they'll say, no. So they'll move on to where the total price is cheaper. So that's part of that issue. The other part is to initiate a sales tax takes a lot more than six guys or seven guys sitting at the table saying, okay, let's go ahead and raise it another half percent. So there's a, there's a process that has to take place for that to happen. And Gerald, maybe you know better than I do about how that works.
Well, I always say there's, be careful what you ask for with city government or any level of government. Because we have the ability to regulate tax. And that's really, to provide solutions for anything, it takes money. And so, it's refreshing to hear a citizen talk about wanting to pay a tax for something, because that's not something that I hear on a regular basis.
I lived in Virginia where we did like, we had an extra, I mean, it was 4% size tax and everything. But then when we ate out, like, then it was like 12% of our taxes and so on. So it just depended, there were ways that we could shop. You know, if we're eating out here, already doing a luxury tax anyway, pretty much we'll tip everything else. So there are ways that we can go about it. I'm worried about all these small businesses, I mean, families that we're talking about. I mean, let's be honest, the federal government's going to bail out any large company that really suffers if they need to. I mean, they can file for Chapter 13 and cover all their losses in some ways. And then the people that are sitting on top of it pretty much are fine. But, you know, the local businesses and the local families that we're looking at, I mean, like, I couldn't eat at Sandy's Tacos for over a month, and trust me, it about killed me. I love their tacos. But, I mean, there are a lot of other small businesses I go to that I just, you know, worry about. Because, I mean, if you just saw on the news, you know, J.C. Penney's is closing here in our city. But there are a lot of little things that we're going to be losing if we're not careful. And I know tax, I know the issue, but there are ways that we could perhaps go about it. But just some kind of idea to put in place.
Well, I'll prime the pump just a little bit, and I know some of the commissioners may want to speak about. Economic development is something that's very important to this city commission for many reasons. How the city currently accomplishes that is several different ways. The primary way, I think, is supporting with quite a bit of funding, the Enid Regional Development Alliance. And I know Lisa Powell is here for most of the evening, she might not be here right now. But she is the executive director, was just at the council meeting Tuesday night, too. And so, specific projects like developing the district and working on the movie theater and working on Oakwood Mall, and working on the downtown hotel, those are all things that obviously will not happen by themselves. I really wish they would, but, but they won't. So the private sector by itself cannot make those happen. So the city takes some of those revenues that we get and determines how much of it they want to directly impact those projects with. uh, how much of it they want to directly impact those projects with. And so, uh, one of the things that I know that, uh, the, the city council is supporting through ERDA um, is funding in a level of about six hundred thousand dollars a year. And part of their, part of ERDA's effort is to help small businesses and particularly businesses here in Enid, Oklahoma. Now, does that, that, that currently I don't believe specifically means helping them with specific funds to do things, i- if they're not related to expanding or doing something that, uh, uh, like, like ADM did, where they improved their, their mill, improved their processes. But that doesn't mean that it couldn't be that way. So, I, I think, uh, your elected officials up here have com- complete control on that. And so, they may want to talk about some of their thoughts on it.
In my after-five life, I own a small business here in Enid along with my husband. We own Da Vinci's Coffee House and we, um, have benefited from the ERDA and their support as well as from the, um, Federal Small Business Association. And, um, I would just say with my small business hat on that we need Enid, um, to support local businesses and to shop local and, and eat out local, just like you mentioned. Um, and that we just need to, you know, support each other in the middle of another crisis. Um, and I do think that through this first wave of, um, shutdowns, we, I think our businesses have done an excellent job of learning how to keep their employees and their staff safe and their customers safe. Um, I'm seeing businesses across town utilizing social distancing and asking employees to wear masks. And I just think as we continue to do that, um, that is what's gonna help us avoid another, um, need to reduce being open.
So, I, I really just want to, uh, put a small caveat on that. That was, uh, very well stated. Shout out to Enid Cash Mob. Um, that's an example of how locally, and for those who don't know, Enid Cash Mob is a group of citizens that made a determination that they were gonna target businesses, small businesses around Enid. And they were just going to decide one day, we're gonna go in there and we're gonna buy up whatever it is that they have in there. And they've shut down multiple businesses for a couple of days, some of them. Because they just went in there and they just bought from there just simply because they respect the business, they love dealing with local. If you want to know how you can help prepare these businesses for any, any trouble upcoming, whether it be a pandemic or otherwise, shopping local. If you understand the fundamental principles, a wide so important in order to be able to shop local, I'm gonna give you just a real quick rundown. When you spend dollars here in Enid as opposed to, uh, whether it be Amazon or shopping online, when you spend them here, the people who work at those businesses, they live here and they spend their dollars here too. Which means those tax dollars circulate within the community over and over and over again and go towards your economic development. They go through your infrastructure in order to be able to develop it. Every time you send a dollar outside of this community instead of spending it here, you, you take that money away and it doesn't go to making this community better. So, take this time in this period to reflect and say, hey, look, I may want to do an Amazon and I'm guilty, I got boxes in the garage stacked up now, uh, to get, to get thrown away. But I've become more and more conscious about why it's important in order to be able to shop local, buy local and support local businesses. The next thing is this, ERDA, for those who don't know what ERDA is, it's, it's, it's our Economic Development Representation here in, uh, here in Enid. And their sole, sole purpose is to look at ways in order to be able to develop strategically our economy and our, our businesses here. If you as a business owner have not been in contact with Lisa Powell and her staff at ECO, uh, at ERDA, I would encourage you to make that phone call and talk to them about any, any programs that might be available in order to be able to support your business or how you can better prepare for things that might be forthcoming that we're looking in the future in order to be able to prepare for. There are funds and there are things available depending on what it is your need is, but they are trained specifically in order to be able to help you in those areas.
Hey, do, do a quick roll call, we got one more question at least, I know. Dale Costet, is Dale Costet here? No?
I watched him leave.
Hmm?
I watched him walk out the door.
Got it. Harley Bradford? Jalise Williams? I'm just checking to see who's, if anybody's still here, and I know Val Gina's gone. All right, we got Ms. Waddell, last question.
I'll do my best not to embarrass you, no promises.
You never embarrass me.
I avoided coming up here for, for the evening because I hate this microphone. But anyways, first of all, I want to say thank you to our city officials and our commissioners. During this whole COVID-nineteen, you took on a, a responsibility and a role and a huge undertaking that, um, I don't think anyone would ever want to do. I think you handled it very well. Thank you for your leadership and your direction through, through that, through this season. And, um, I appreciate you. To my African-American members on the panel this evening, forgive me if I get emotional. Statistically speaking, you should not be here today. So, I thank you for using your voice and your seat and your spirit of influence to speak out and to shed light on an issue that has been plaguing this country, has been plaguing us for generations. So, thank you. And despite the system that was created to work against you, you're sitting in a seat to, to make a difference and to bring change, so thank you again. In regards to racism, the overreaching question being asked, what can we do from our white sisters and brothers? You can listen, empathize, support, pray. Let them know that you are, that you care. Set a new standard that you will not tolerate racism any longer. And we thank, thank those in the community who have reached out personally to our family. We appreciate it, so thank you. And their response has always, has been, I am sorry, I didn't know, I had no clue. And my response to that has, our response has been to majority of them is, it's okay. You don't know what you don't know. But knowing that grace needs to be extended. But there is a point in time when we no longer can operate out of ignorance and lack of knowledge with so much information and resources available to us today. Especially now more so than ever when it's very apparent what's taking place in this world. And with revelation comes huge responsibility. So, my question for our city, our business owners, our, our officials and those in leadership, what are you going to do to set the standard that racism can no longer be tolerated? From your, for your employees, for your city members and for the generation that will come to follow? One of the quotes that I do love that is posted in our house comes from 1 John three verse eighteen. Let us not love with our words or speech, but with actions and in truth. What are we going to put into action that will invoke the substantial change in our city? You don't have to respond, but that's just a challenge and a question that I leave with you guys this evening. Thank you.
I will. Hold, hold on Commissioner Norwood, I gotta say, that, that's my wife right there.
Ms. Waddell, thank you for your expression and thank you for that question. Um, as an adult, we realize that we can't force or make anyone do anything. Um, first thing I believe we need to do is acknowledge God for who he is, pray for one another, ask the Lord for knowledge, wisdom, guidance and understanding. Um, I received an email from Senator James Langford. And it really jarred my mind and really made me think for days and I shared it with my father. And then in, in that email, he asked a question. He had quoted a, a verse out of, uh, Second Corinthians, chapter five. And he had asked a question. He said, how many of you have invited a family of a different agniscity, agniscity into your home to sit down and eat dinner together and talk about these social issues? I'm glad that I can say I have. And that's a challenge. Um, my second part of the answer to you is, and to all of us, I believe that we must hold ourselves accountable and those that are in leadership and government positions and positions of authority must hold everyone accountable that's underneath them. And like I said today, there was an issue on my job site. And I had to stand up and make myself accountable and reconstruct the way we were gonna do a job to eliminate the foolishness of racism because I saw it coming. And it began to operate. Last but not least, racism is just not a natural thing. It's a spiritual sickness. It's a evil, it's a wickedness and it's of the devil and it's not of God. So, if you want to eliminate racism, love God because the love of God will change you. And if you don't believe so, when you get to your home, get down on your knees tonight. I challenge you, whether you believe in God or not, ask him and he will answer.
Amen, brother Norwood. So, what I would like to do is ask everyone that's here to come and be with us on Saturday, the sixth of June at ten o'clock AM, meet us at Government Springs Park. We're gonna have a March for Justice and Unity. And if I could get every one of the panel members to join us, I know, uh, Mr. O'Rourke will be there with his crew. But I'm challenging everyone else to come with us and walk hand in hand. We're just gonna go a short distance, starting again at ten o'clock on Saturday. Metal, not Metal Lake, but Government Springs Park, ten AM on Saturday. Join in with us, a March for Justice and Unity. We will be so happy that you came. You'll have, we'll have speakers that will engage you and, and even make you want to get closer to your brother or sister. Because believe it or not, we are all brothers and sisters in this land, in, in Enid, Oklahoma. And I enjoyed this young man so much. You touched my heart today. And I, I am, um, that's your brother? Oh, okay. But please join us on Saturday, ten AM, Government Springs Park.
All right. Any other questions didn't get a- answered today from the crowd, from the audience? Anybody got one last question?
I don't know if everybody knows or not, but, uh, the whole reason we're here tonight is because Demetrius Office reached out to all of us and said, you know what? I'd like to moderate that. I'm a impartial third party. I would like to set this thing up and let the community see what everybody's thinking. He came up with the panel, he contacted the elected, uh, state representatives as well as the city. Uh, he planned the format, he got with the city manager and got the venue set up. Uh, this was all because one man decided, it's not my job, but you know what, needs to be done, I'm gonna do it. And I know y'all appreciate that. I'd like to give them the only thing that, you know, the mayor don't make much money, but they do give me these coins. It's called a Mayor of Enid Coin and I'd like to present one to my friend Dee. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Office, one second. Mr. Mayor has overlooked me over and over again for one of his coins. We've talked about this.
Hater. Well, as we wrap up tonight, I want to say, they told me to look right in the camera, so I'm gonna come to the camera right now. We will stream this live through, uh, Facebook, through our City of Enid Facebook page live. And we averaged about a hundred and fifty to two hundred, it fluctuated. So, to my Enid community out there in Facebook Live, thank you for, for tuning in tonight. Thank you for being diligent, thank you for listening to those questions. See your, see your city council, ask your questions, come here next time so we can give you a big hug when we get past this Corona stuff. Thank you. For my audience here, I watched you guys sit here all night diligently waiting to ask your questions. And I'm so proud. I think this was a success tonight. I never met Frank before. Man, I look forward to having a coffee with you. Oh, uh, these new relationships. An individual never been able to, was able to talk before the city commissions and ask his questions at that forum, that happened tonight. Another individual pilot coming in from, not even from Enid, stirred a crowd up in joyous, in a joyous fashion. I love it. I, I want to ask my panel for, for, really quick, one second. Who here from our panel is from, is born and raised in Enid, Oklahoma? Raise your hand. Take a look at this. Take a look at this. Not even half was born and raised in Enid, Oklahoma. Not even half was born and raised in Oklahoma. But every single last one of these individuals has stood for justice, has stood for equality, has been present, has said, had, had never argued with the fact that they, they were asked to be here for, I didn't even give them a time. I didn't even give them a time that they, they were gonna leave, but they decided, they already decided. Decided it's the root word for cut off. They made a decision that they were gonna be here for you. And for that, give your panel a hand and a round of applause. One of my favorite authors is W.E.B. Du Bois. Anybody ever heard of W.E.B. Du Bois? W.E.B. Du Bois said, we are all coworkers in the kingdom of culture. All coworkers in the kingdom of culture. That means we are locking arms in the great city of Enid together and we are protecting our lands. We are protecting this city, we are coming together as a people and we're unifying and we're showing the world how to do this thing the right way. So, tonight, I want to say, this is your marching orders. Don't let it stop here, go out those doors and you unify with somebody who is of a different race, who is of a different gender, who is of a different walk. And you tell them that, I don't know who you are, but I don't, I don't know where you come from, but I'm gonna figure out how to love you the best way that you want to be loved yourself. Treat others how you would want to be treated. I turn the media back over to Mayor.
I'd like to thank the City of Enid employees for all they've done to make this night possible.
Okay, I, I'd like to thank all the panelists for coming. Again, thanks Dee for setting this up and thank you all for coming out to, uh, to be part of this and, and be involved in your community and making your community better. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.